From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada. A new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season. You're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace Nixle and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered.
We'll call to order this regular Board of the Nevada County Supervisors of November 7th, 2023. Rachel, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Ledge of legions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of America, a nation, your God, indivisible, for the truth and justice for all.
Thank you, Rachel. Madam Clerk, are there any corrections, deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Chair. Regarding Agenda Item Number 34, SR 23-4841, the Crist Land Use Appeal, the Clerk of the Board received a request to continue the hearing. We've granted the request and it will be rescheduled for a date to be decided.
Very good. Thank you. All right. So at this time, we'll go into our general public comment. Members of the public shall be allowed to address the Board of Supervisors on items not appearing on today's agenda that are of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board. Speakers are encouraged but not required to give their name and district residences. Please direct your comments to the Board, not the audience or staff. No individual may speak more than once during public comment. Let's see. You may provide comments by speaking directly to the Board from inside the chambers or by calling 530-270-3474 to comment live on the phone. With that, Lee will open up general public comment. Should be.
I can't. There it goes. Okay. Once again, good morning, everyone. I've been speaking to you to alert you that the Nevada County General Code, Article 7, hazardous vegetation and combustible material abatement, is severely limited and leaves the county open to a major disaster. This code has been the foundation for inspection of very dangerous fire conditions that have been reported at almost every board meeting since April of 2023. This was reported on the property of the Alta Sierra Country Club. Of course, the code, being very limited, does not apply as determined by one of the six public officials charged with the task of inspection as a hazardous condition. The county needs to reevaluate other conditions that need to be included to protect not only those who live in Alta Sierra, but also those who will be affected by wildfire in the communities around the area should a wildfire erupt. Section GV-1V 7.1 is supposed to extend state laws to ensure defensible space is maintained on parcels adjacent to improved parcels. I assume that the Alta Sierra Country Club is a parcel, and it is adjacent to many parcels in Alta Sierra. It's also to ensure defensive space along emergency access easements and evacuation routes and fire access easements. Of paramount importance is the protection of lives and structures and the safety of firefighters and law enforcement. The purpose of this article, as stated, is to provide for removal of hazardous material from around the exterior of improvements. The code then limits it to owners, not businesses like the Alta Sierra Country Club. I request that a task force be assembled to analyze the code and update it to include improvements to support the many situations ignored in the current code. Thank you.
Lee, I will be in contact with you, sit down and discuss this in detail, okay?
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board of Supervisors, my name is Jean Franklin. I live in District 2. Supervisor Schofield and Hook, I've been in direct contact with you both and other members of the Board of Supervisors via public comment and meetings regarding commercial cannabis proposal on Meyer Ravine. Sorry, I just got here. Discussed in the meeting held in July at the home of Donna Zachamy along with county employees and 30-plus residents, and published in the Union newspaper was the following with regards to proposed commercial cannabis grow at 22309 Meyer Ravine on a one-lane private road with one means of vigorous. We were told that exclusionary zones were tried in Humboldt County and failed upon research. No evidence of this can be found via phone calls to Humboldt County Cannabis Division or in their newspapers. Exclusionary zones need to be addressed and placed within the cannabis ordinance, especially in areas where being zoned ag are considered residential properties. With regards to NID water and the property in question on Meyer Ravine, it was said that the NID issue would be looked into, that it could be a surprise for the applicant too at the end. A call was made to NID who advised the following. The owner does not have access to the pipeline, rather a spring, the property on the property. And according to NID, he can pull water out. This property has an active intermittent flow account which water can be pumped out of Meyer Ravine. Intermittent flow accounts are not guaranteed source of water. And if there is water in the natural waterway, the customer is allowed to pump out of the canal April 15th to October 14th. Nevada County Commercial Cannabis Regulation frequently asks questions under Environmental Health Standards Section states that located near Wolf Creek, as per the Central Valley Regional Water Control Board, Wolf Creek is an impacted body of water due to the sensitive nature of the current composition of Wolf Creek. Each cultivation submittal located near or around Wolf Creek will be evaluated and the setback could be increased to 100 feet, but no more than 400 feet. Meyer Ravine is attributable to Wolf Creek, which flows into Bear River and thence the Feather and Sacramento Rivers. Is this property in compliance with the standard? Not quite sure. Running out of time. I wanted to address Court Megan Warden, who addressed the Board on 10/24. We are actively watching what's going to be happening with this with their, what's the word? Appeal, thank you. Because as you guys know, we're really watching this closely. Things need to be looked at. I have more, but I'm running out of time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have a copy of that that you could give to our clerk, what you just read?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would help. And also, would you give me your name again? We didn't catch it at the beginning.
Jean Franklin.
Jean what?
Franklin.
Franklin.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Ralph Silverstein, CEA Foundation. Hopefully, you have each received a copy of our legal review of the RISE vested rights petition that was prepared by Shoot Mahaly and Weinberger. From that legal review, it seems very clear that because the Idaho Maryland mine shut down in 1956, followed by liquidation of assets, by 1960, any vested rights that might have existed were lost. Multiple reasons are provided to make this point. But despite that blatant fact, RISE attempts to develop examples of continuous mining operations, citing a string of various irrelevant activities. These examples do not withstand scrutiny. For example, there's a Hanson Brothers case in which vested rights for the aggregate processing business were retained after a period of non-operation. RISE claims that the aggregate processing on the Centennial Site in the 1980s is a similar case. However, unlike the complete shutdown and liquidation of the Idaho Maryland Mine in the 1950s, the Hanson business did not completely shut down. The plant, equipment, inventory, and utilities were maintained throughout the non-use period. Some business activities were being conducted and some materials were stockpiled that could be drawn upon. The vested rights issue was regarding an area of hillside quarrying that was not in continuous use. A key point is that the Hanson Brothers relied upon materials from both the hillside quarry and the riverbed to create their products. Thus, because the hillside use was an integral component of the business, the vested right was not lost. The Hanson ruling goes on to clearly acknowledge that if the hillside operations were an independent part of the business instead of an integral or component part, the vested right may be lost. In other words, the vested right to carry out one type of mining does not guarantee a broader right to carry out other distinct mining uses in a business. Other case law also finds that a vested right to mine is limited to the particular asset being mined. Applying this standard to the RISE vested rights claim, aggregate processing from waste rock on the Centennial Site was a completely independent operation and therefore is not relevant to the gold mine operations. In summary, the claim of vested rights fails on the outside following the shutdown of the mine in the 1956 timeframe. And even beyond that, the vested petition additionally fails because the mining of aggregates on the Centennial Site is irrelevant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ralph. John?
Good morning. My name is John Vaughn. I live in District 3. At the June 27th Board Meeting, I spoke of the fact that during the RISE Gold Draft and final EIR process, for any item of substance, RISE Gold and Rainy Planning and Management ignored all outside experts, claiming it wasn't necessary or the experts were ill-informed, confused, or just wrong. During my career, I was always well-served by listening to every expert I could find. I'm hopeful that for the review of RISE Gold's desperate attempt to claim vested rights, the Planning Department, County Council, and the Board will listen to all the experts. The specific example I'm talking about today is the Shoot Mahaly and Weinberger LLC response to RISE Gold's vested rights petition. CEA Foundation has submitted copies to you. I respectfully urge you to read them. A look at the Shoot Mahaly and Weinberger document regarding the County Land Use Code is a good example. Under the Nevada County Land Use and Development Code, Section L2 5.19B, any vested right to mine gold expires once the non-conforming use is discontinued for one year. In the Hanson Brothers case cited 49 times in the RISE petition, the Hanson project did not terminate all operations, yet the court voiced no doubt about whether the land use code would terminate vested rights automatically if operations had ceased for the one-year period. Other cases decided after Hanson Brothers indicate that this Board should give the land use code its plain meaning, that any vested right to mine gold has been lost through discontinuance of the original use. Shoot Mahaly and Weinberger also note in 2006, the California Department of Toxic Substances Control, DTSC, launched a statewide database to better identify and track inactive or abandoned mines. DTSC selected the Idaho Maryland Mine as its single starting example to demonstrate the capabilities of the new database. In other words, the Idaho Maryland Mine is not just an abandoned mine. It is the poster child for abandoned mines in California. I urge you to read the CEA and Shoot Mahaly, Weinberger responses and just say no to all elements of the RISE Gold Project. And lastly, as your next meeting is not until December 5th, I hope each of you has a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hello there. My name is Lisa Hamilton, and I'm following up with Jean's talk. Anyway, I'm from District 2 and I live off of Meyer Ravine where the proposed pot grow is. So at the meeting in July with county officials and Supervisor Schofield and Hook residents on Meyer Ravine, we pointed out the 20-foot wide right-of-way on Meyer Ravine from Garden Bar. It was overlooked. An architect took a review or made a review and submitted plans to advise county officials that the submitted plans had flaws and were vague regarding road improvements, which were outlined in specific details and drawing to the county officials. And, sorry, and the county officials asked how these inconsistencies met county standards and still stay in the easements. Nevada County Planning Department on August 7th, upon review of the architect's email, it was then determined that because of a 20-foot wide right-of-way to Garden Bar, the petition for exceptions that had originally applied for would be an active component of the project for that area of the road. We are now awaiting a submittal. At the BOS meeting on 10/24, Court and Megan Warden addressed the Board. Supervisor Schofield stated that Mr. Warden had made the appeal that the arguments will be held on December 5th. However, if Court and Megan had not utilized the three-minute public commitment, our county residents would not have been privy to their appeal. We are watching the appeal very closely and is on our barometer. Supervisor Hook stated that at the same meeting, a lot of work had been done beforehand to get to this point where the appeal was needed. More work needs to be done, questions answered, plans and plans. What we're witnessing, what we are witnessing, whether it is Meyer Ravine, Thoroughbred Loops, Six B Ranch, Golden Oaks, or the expansion of a commercial cannabis grow on Blue Heron, is that there are broken chains within the county departments. There seems to be a huge disconnect in county officials working together and being versed in the county ordinances and compliance. It should not be up to the Nevada County residents to bring forth what we're finding. We're concerned county residents, we, the concerned county residents, should not need to be the stewards of the research in our own county laws, compliance, and ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Good morning, Mr. Schofield. Chair Schofield. I'm bringing forward some issues that I'm dealing with in trying to document the continued destruction of the wetlands on the Ranch House project. When I was documenting the current work in the wetlands area, I had a confrontation with the son's or the contractor's son that led to verbal abuse. The situation was then elevated to Pat Souza, and Pat Souza said that we would have a meeting in the following morning with the contractor and the son to get an apology. That didn't happen. I want to bring to you guys' attention that I think the project is not being properly ran by Pat Souza for a number of reasons. He admitted himself that he actually did the masquecation in the wetlands outside of the staked area. He ran the project for over two weeks without requiring PPE with the contractors on site. He has allowed the work and progress to start to progress without having the project fully fenced. There is not, there is not, the wetlands are not properly staked and having orange fencing put around them so that people don't accidentally go in and contractors or workers don't accidentally go in and continue the damage. There is also concern that there is not a sound plan for installing the leach field on the opposite side of the hill crossing over the wetlands. I'm seeing that they already are changing directions or have already done work in the wetlands that are outside of the footprint of the proposed site plans on site. I've talked with Eden Ranch. Eden Ranch says that they have not given permission to access the easement that was granted to them for servicing the solar field to access the leach field. In my opinion, the way to get to the leach field, they've already created a problem with getting to the leach field the only way known that I can see, and that is they're putting the tanks in before using that area where they would cross the leach field to cross the wetlands to get into the area to supply 100 tons of rock that's necessary for the leach field. I think this project needs to be stopped on a number of reasons, for a number of reasons. Needs to be regrouped and assessed to create accountability for the process in what's going on with these wetlands being continually damaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Is there any other public comment here in the chambers? Madam Clerk, is there anyone online?
Yes, we have one caller and we also received a written comment about the same 22309 Myers Ravine property that the full Board received. So we do have one caller as well.
Okay, let's bring the caller in.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Matthew Coulter calling in. I'll have to agree about the Ranch House situation. There isn't a piece of broken ground in Nevada County you can point out and say that they're following the rules from Lumberika to Berryton Ranch, all over the place. It's just doesn't even matter which construction site you go to. You can see stuff that shouldn't be being done, especially near waterways. But specifically, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, Grass Valley, Dantown Association, Caldwell Banker, Sierra Foothill Construction, Nevada County Contractors Association, Grass Valley City Hall. That includes all meetings, Grass Valley workers, contractors, subcontractors, friends, family, and dogs that I'm all restrained from. Those are all people that I'm restrained from and not able to participate. And that's why I can't even come to your meeting because there might be somebody there that I'm restrained from because it's over 1,000 people to keep track of. It's very difficult for me to participate in a local government meeting being that you don't want to hear about dirty water. You don't want to hear about violations that are taking place that are blatantly happening right in front of your eyes. You literally drive by, do in front of your houses, but you won't do anything about. So your response to that, to the citizens, is to sue them and to tie them up in court. And it's not just me. This has gone on for years in the county. I call it gold rush politics. You can call it whatever you want. Some people call it the big C-word. But it is ongoing and I just want you to know, and I want the taxpayers to know where their money is going to with hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars directed at me to silence me for nothing more than verbalizing my right as an American citizen to my elected officials to air my grievances. They tell me it's a complaint-driven process, yet if I bring something forward, I'm labeled as a lunatic and way unhinged. That's the word the DA uses, unhinged. So I appreciate what you guys are doing there. I know it's not an easy job. But at the same time, when I talk to code compliance, when I talk to planning, when I talk to the different agencies within the agency, nothing seems to be getting done. And it's even gone to the point where they literally will say, "We can't do anything about that." And then I ask, "Who do I take it to from here?" So here I am, speaking to my elected officials because the people underneath you aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing all the way through the process. So thanks. I'll keep watching.
Thank you, Matthew. All right. And Tina, you noted all the supervisors got the correspondence and that will be part of the record. So
Yes, Chair.
No need to read that.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time? All right. Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion. And we will move into our consent agenda. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. The Board of Directors will act upon them at one time without discussion. Any Board member may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Members of the public wishing to ask questions or hear discussion on items listed under the consent agenda may raise their concerns to the Board members prior to the consent agenda being introduced. The directors will take the concerns under consideration and decide if there is adequate reason to remove the item from consent. Board members, any items you wish to pull? Madam Clerk, any items? No?
No, no callers.
General public, any items to pull? Anybody online?
No chair, no callers.
Very good. Then I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hall?
Second.
Second Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
District 4?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes. Thank you very much. And at this time, we are going to recess the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors and call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the Nevada County Sanitation District. And with that, we have just one item, and that is also, well, two items within the consent calendar. So I'm not going to read it again. We just read the consent on the regular board meeting. So, members of the Board, are there any items to be pulled on the sanitation district? So, members of the board, are there any items to be pulled on the sanitation district? None, madam clerk, anybody?
No callers, Chair.
Okay, general public? All right, seeing none, then I will close that portion of it and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout?
Second.
Second Supervisor Hall. Madam Clerk?
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes. All right, thank you. With that, we will adjourn the meeting of the Board of Directors of the Nevada County Sanitation District Number One and reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors November 7th, 2023. Let me get back. All right, we're going to call this back to order, and this is a pretty special item that we have. I know that Mr. Thornsby is going to introduce this, and I want to recognize, because this presentation is in memory of, and our thanks to our former Senator Dianne Feinstein.
Chair Schofield, one moment, my apologies. We just need about 30 seconds to fix a technical issue.
Okay.
Thank you, my apologies.
Joanna, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Very good. So we have a short technical delay, and then we'll get right to it. And I'll just point out while we're doing this, Joanna Hayes-White is representing Dianne Feinstein's office and family, and it's an honor to have you here.
Chair Schofield, we are ready to go ahead.
Oh, okay. I want to turn this over to Mr. Thornsby then, okay?
Thank you so much, Chair Schofield, members of the board. My name's Jeff Thornsby. I'm your senior management analyst, and it's a real pleasure to be here today, and thank you. As you already noted, we have Joanne Hayes-White, the Director for Northern California for the late Senator Feinstein's office for California, and so it's a real pleasure to have here. I'm just going to just briefly just mention a couple components and then turn it over to her for some comments. But I just, number one, just want to, you know, of course, relay condolences to her family and to her friends and her staff. And, you know, over the last few years, our office has had the opportunity of working directly with the Senator's staff. I've met with her staff in DC myself, and they've always been extremely responsive. And so, you know, one of the things I just wanted to highlight is, you know, of course, the Senator passed away in September, and we were obviously very saddened. But I think, you know, in bringing forward, initially, we were going to bring forward, you know, a condolence letter, and then I think that's when you and I discussed and thought it'd be appropriate, actually, to do something more formal in honor of her legacy and her work for California, the constituents of Nevada County. And I think as we, you know, really looking through her legacy and just really acknowledging, her roots come from local roots, and so she was a supervisor for the San Francisco Board of Supervisors back in 1969, worked at the local level, including difficult times in San Francisco, and so I think her connection to local government stayed with her throughout her tenure, from our perspective, and I just wanted to highlight that. And some of the things, too, I would just acknowledge is her work in public safety, public lands, diversity, of course, intelligence, human rights, cybersecurity, and most recently really working directly with us in terms of thinking of how to mitigate the devastating wildfires that we see here in the West Coast. And I do just want to highlight, over the last few years, the last three years, the Senator did help promote and support and advocate for congressional-designated spending for Nevada County residents that had ultimately correlated to about $2.5 million for public safety efforts. That includes funding for the North San Juan Fire Suppression Project, and also funding for the Ponderosa West Fuel Brake Project. And most currently, actually, currently also brought forward a congressional-designated spending for $750,000, which is still pending, of course, whether the House moves forward with their budget, which we hope they do. But that would also help provide funding for vegetation management on some of the key evacuation routes in Nevada County and cover over half of those critical routes, over half of our fireways communities. So that's a huge component, and so I think that's what we saw from Senator Feinstein continually advocating. And of course, some of the members here on the dais have actually met with her staff and also toured, and so I don't want to be too long-winded, but I just wanted to underscore, really, the participation at the federal level in her office was noted, and we truly appreciate it. With that, maybe I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Hayes-White, for any comments that you would like to make.
Certainly. Thank you, Jeffrey, Chair Schofield, and members of the board. My name is Joanne Hayes-White, and I served as the Northern California Director of Operations for Senator Dianne Feinstein. And on behalf of her family and her staff, I want to extend our appreciation and gratitude for the resolution that you've prepared for the life and legacy of Senator Dianne Feinstein. It was an honor and privilege to work for Senator Feinstein over the past 18 months. I first met Senator Feinstein in 1979, when I was 15 years old, just after she'd taken over as mayor during a tumultuous, tragic time in the city of San Francisco. We both loved our city, we're both native San Franciscans. And as mayor of San Francisco, as Jeffrey alluded to, as she was supervisor as well, but also as Senator of California for over 30 years, Senator Feinstein led with courage, wisdom, professionalism. She was consensus-oriented and very hardworking. She truly led by example. Prior to working for Senator Feinstein, I was a member of the San Francisco Fire Department for nearly 30 years and served as Chief of Department from 2004 to 2019. Senator Feinstein was a huge influence in my pursuit of a non-traditional career for women at the time in 1990. And although I was happily retired for over three years, I didn't hesitate at all when I was asked to join her staff in 2022. And I can say the last 18 months of her life, working with her, I learned so much, and we became very close. And so her passing has hit us all very hard. But what we find comfort in is knowing that she's at peace. She was very committed to her job. She wanted to finish strong, and she did just that. As Jeffrey mentioned, Senator Feinstein passed away in the early hours of September 29th, and on September 28th, she worked and Vip voted, and her last vote was to avoid the government shutdown, which was avoided during that time. And so it is fitting that she wanted to finish strong, she certainly did, and now she is at peace. So once again, on behalf of Senator Feinstein's family, her daughter Catherine, her granddaughter Eileen, her son-in-law Rick, as well as her staff in DC, Fresno, San Diego, Los Angeles, and here in San Francisco, we are very grateful to the Nevada County Board of Supervisors for this acknowledgement, and I will be certain to hand-deliver the resolution that will be sent to the office here in San Francisco to her daughter Catherine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joanna, and thank you for your service. It's really an honor to have you here with us today. What I would like to do is read the resolution so that folks know what we have to say about the Senator, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues that I know have comments that they would like to make also. So if I may, this is Resolution Number 23-554 of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Nevada. Resolution honoring the life and legacy of United States Senator Dianne Feinstein. Whereas Dianne Feinstein was born on June 22nd, 1933, in San Francisco, California, and whereas her public service roots include local government service, where she was elected at the San Francisco Board of Supervisors on November 5th, 1969, and became the first female president of the board, and whereas Feinstein remained in local public service despite tremendous personal loss and demonstrated great strength and leadership in the aftermath of the assassination of San Francisco Mayor George Moscone and Supervisor Harvey Milk, as well as other significant challenges, including the White Night Riots, the Jonestown Massacre, and the AIDS epidemic. And whereas on November 3rd, 1992, Dianne Feinstein, along with Barbara Boxer, was among the first two women to represent the state of California in the United States Senate in what became known as the Year of the Woman. And whereas Dianne Feinstein was elected to the Senate by the people of California five more times, and on March 28th, 2021, became the longest-serving senator to represent California. And whereas on November 5th, 2022, Dianne Feinstein became the longest-serving female senator in the history of the United States. And whereas Dianne Feinstein's work positively impacted the lives of Nevada County residents, including in the areas of public safety, preservation of public lands, and national parks in California, diversity and inclusion, intelligence and human rights, cybersecurity, and increasing resources to fight wildfires in California. And whereas throughout her tenure as a senator, she always maintained an open-door policy to local governments and rural California counties, including Nevada County residents and Nevada County Board of Supervisors and staff. And whereas Senator Feinstein's office maintained a working relationship with Nevada County, meeting with members of the Board of Supervisors and staff, and traveling to Nevada County to meet with the community. And whereas in 2022, acting as the Chair of the Rural County Representatives of California, Nevada County District Three Supervisor met personally with Senator Feinstein to discuss critical issues facing rural counties. And whereas Senator Feinstein advocated directly for Nevada County, helping the county obtain $2.5 million in congressionally-directed spending since 2021 for public safety-related projects, including the North San Juan Fire Suppression Project and the Ponderosa West Grass Valley Defense Zone. And whereas while the fiscal year '25 federal budget has not yet been adopted, it contains $750,000 in funding for yet another public safety project in Nevada County that Senator Feinstein advanced through the appropriation process. And whereas Dianne Feinstein served as a trailblazer in public service dedicated to the well-being of the people of the United States, California, and Nevada County. And whereas Dianne Feinstein and her life and legacy are an inspiration for future leaders and women in Nevada County, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Nevada County honors the life and legacy of United States Senator Dianne Feinstein and her contributions to the United States, California, and Nevada County. Be it further resolved that the Clerk of the Board is directed to submit a certified copy of this resolution to the family of Dianne Feinstein as an extension of the Board of Supervisors' gratitude and condolences. And before we take the vote, I wanted to open this up. I got some ladies on here. I know they'd love to speak on it. Heidi, would you want to start this?
Thank you. I'm so glad we're bringing this forward, and thank you, Joanne, for being here to accept this. So much can be said about Dianne Feinstein and her service, and she was just an iconic figure in the state and in the country, and such a consequential legislator. I think we all have much to be grateful for in what she did for constituents here in California. She was certainly a role model for women like me going into politics or wanting to be in public service, and watched her closely and was very proud of much of what she did. I had the opportunity to meet with her and speak with her briefly a few years ago, and she committed to come to Nevada County. I'm sure she made lots of commitments like that that were hard to keep, and her health, I know, restricted her in her later years. I'm particularly grateful for what she did for us here in Nevada County and in the rural areas. It's so difficult to get attention from statewide and national legislators to the rural areas, and it was, what she did for us was also consequential. So my deepest gratitude and condolences, and I thank her for her service and hope she rests in peace.
Thank you, Heidi. Sue?
Heidi said that so well. She was a tremendous woman. I had the opportunity to work with her on agriculture issues when I was on the State Board for the Farm Bureau, and I think what I loved about her is she would speak with you. She would have those conversations, whether we agreed or disagreed, and I always appreciate that was, you know, it's been many years ago, but it was such an opportunity at the time. You know, agriculture had an ear, even, you know, we had different sides of the line, but she was very special in that way. And then having to get to work and see some of her staff, as we did through Nevada County during the time, and know that that kind of support was going out for rural communities was really, truly special. And condolences seriously to her family, because she truly left a great legacy in the state of California and the United States.
Thank you, Sue. Lisa?
Great, thank you. Thank you so much for being here today to accept this acknowledgement of the Senator. I actually had the opportunity to meet her twice. Neither one, well, one was political, but the other was years ago, when she was the mayor of San Francisco. I worked in a jewelry store in San Francisco that was owned by her cousin, and she came in with her husband to Christmas shop, and he, the owner, said, "You wait on her. You're free, you wait on her." And she was the nicest person, you know? I was this young, you know, didn't really know anything about politics, and I'm helping the mayor of San Francisco buy some gifts for her family for Christmas. And I believe that you can judge a lot about a person with how they treat people in the retail, in the service, or the restaurant business, and she couldn't have been nicer. And I will never forget how kind she was. And then a few years later, when I had moved back to Grass Valley, when she was running for the Senate, she came here and met with people, and at the time, this was, weren't a lot of Democrats around, and so they rallied some of us, and we gave her a tour of downtown Grass Valley, and she was very interested to be here and talk with the people. Again, extremely kind, and I believe her whole service to our country, she always led with that, with kindness and with the desire to actually help people and to be open and talking, you know, talking to just the regular people on the street. Truly, she's been a role model for women in politics, is the first mayor of San Francisco, the first woman elected as the President of the Board of Supervisors, and just always, I've always been very impressed by her. And also her ability to work across the aisle, which isn't easy, especially in the political climate that we live in today, and I believe she never lost that ability. So she will be greatly missed, but the work that she has done and the legacy that she leaves for us will never be forgotten. So thank you for being here, representing her family.
Thank you, Lisa. Heidi?
Turn that on. Joanne, thanks for being here, and again, my condolences to the family and to you. It sounds like you've done a lot of work with her recently, and in your career, it's quite impressive just in and of itself, so thanks for your contributions over that 15-year period. You know, I think a lot of it's been said, I didn't have the honor of meeting her in person, although I've been to her office several times, working with her staff members on different initiatives over the years, and Jeffrey and I were there, I think, about a year ago, talking about legislative continuance of the farm bill and the administrative privileges that we kind of seek as a rural county. And we got a listening in, and had a great meeting, and I appreciate the time that your staff took to talk to us. You know, what comes to mind for me is her contributions to the rural portions of our state, and specifically the Quincy Library Group funding she made, which was this transition from our logging and resource-based economy to treating fuels and fire prevention with a different mindset, and that's really led the way for much of the fuel prevention, forestry, and TSI work that we take, as being kind of the truth and the future-looking forest initiatives part today. So she really started that as a pioneer, which is interesting, you brought up the nonpartisan piece, which is, was a non-traditional approach for some of the Democratic Party during that period. So I just wanted to just thank her for those contributions. That was something that's kind of lived on over time. And of course, her contributions to Lake Tahoe, the summit, and the conservation values she brought to that part of our state were incredible. The ByState Pact, and many of the things that she's helped with have been elements that have increased lake clarity and water quality and the environment for all of that region. So that's where I live, that's part of... So that's where I live. That's part of what I really value. And I just wanted to say thank you for that. And then I'll just briefly touch on her ability to kind of lead with honor through this really partisan period in the last couple of years, which I think is something we all need to remember as we work across the aisle and work with people of different viewpoints and backgrounds. And I appreciate that so much with her diversity. So thank you again for being here, and please pass along our condolences to the family.
Thank you, Heidi. And I echo everybody up here, Joanne. I think in reading this resolution, the thing that came to my mind was Senator Feinstein truly seemed to appreciate the citizens of this country and of California. It didn't matter if they were Republican or Democrat. When they came down on the street, as Lisa said, it didn't matter who she was talking to. She was listening to the concerns. So I think that's a wonderful, wonderful legacy that it would be nice if others would follow that as closely as she did. Allison, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Chair Schofield. She was a role model for both men and women in public service. And Joanne, the words that you used in terms of she led with integrity, she was professional, she was consensus-driven, I think resonates to many of us. So thank you so much for presenting today and providing an opportunity for Nevada County to honor her legacy.
Is there any?
Once again, I was just going to say thank you all so much and thank each and every one of you for your wonderful comments. I certainly will convey them to the family and to her staff. And also want to acknowledge each and every one of you for your public service. And as all of us know, it can be challenging, but it's very rewarding and fulfilling. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. And let us finish up with the resolution and see if there's any other public comment that would like to come forward on this. Madam Clerk, are there any callers?
Yes, Chair, there is one caller.
Very good. Bring the caller in.
Yes, Ed, you know, there's always one in the crowd. This is Matthew Coulter calling. I know a different Dianne Feinstein from the Hunter Point real estate deals of the 70s to the fact that 72% of San Francisco wants to leave San Francisco. The poor place is not the city that I knew, loved, and lived in for years as I watched it decay around me and nothing really being done by the people that supposedly lived there and cared about the city. So as I hear the politicians gloat over other politicians, I have to say as a citizen, I see a different reality of Northern California. I see a different reality of San Francisco with the homeless. The homeless veteran population has been increasing, not going down. And many other problems that have not been dealt with during all these years. So not speaking all the dead, but the Dianne Feinstein that I knew was a very self-serving individual that was focused on what she wanted to be focused on. And a good representation of that was when the children came to sit here in our office and asked about climate change. And so carry on, politicians.
Thank you, Matthew. Joanne, it goes on. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on this resolution.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hall?
Second.
Second Supervisor Hook. Madam Clerk?
District Four. District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes. And again, thank you, Joanne. Joanne, we will get this resolution to you and her family. And thank you again. It was an honor to have you here.
Thank you so much. Have a good rest of the day.
All right. At this time, we have another community presentation. And this is the resolution proclaiming December 9th, 2023 as Nevada County Food and Toy Run Day. Shannon, you and Ed, want to come on up here? I think what I'll do is read the resolution, okay? It's not quite as long as Senator Feinstein's. And then we'll open it up for comments from our colleagues and any questions that we might have, you guys, and any comments that you might have, okay? All right. This is Resolution 23555 of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Nevada. This is a resolution proclaiming December 9th, 2023 as Nevada County Food and Toy Run Day. Whereas this year, the Nevada County Food and Toy Run Day celebrates its 32nd anniversary of bringing motorcyclists to Gold Country on the second Saturday in December. And whereas the Nevada County Food and Toy Run is an annual community event benefiting Head Start with local families in need, ensuring they are able to celebrate the winter holidays with food and toys. And whereas 1,500 to 2,000 motorcyclists will depart from the Eric Rude Administrative Center and ride through Nevada City and Grass Valley, ending at the Nevada County Fairgrounds with thousands of spectators lining the route. Hopefully, it's not raining like last year. And whereas once everyone arrives at the Nevada County Fairgrounds, the bikers unload new unwrapped toys, gifts, and food for the local families in need that might not otherwise be able to celebrate the holidays this year. And whereas over the last few years, this event has been able to help over 1,000 families and more than 2,000 children receive gifts for the winter holidays. And whereas nearly 400 families additionally receive a holiday dinner at the event. And whereas the Nevada County Food and Toy Run has gained the trust and support of the city of Nevada City and the County of Nevada and all branches of local law enforcement as they join in cooperation with the Toy Run organizers to make this a well-executed event. And whereas since its inception in 1991, Nevada County Food and Toy Run has gained a reputation as the safest toy run in Northern California and one which has never been postponed or canceled. And whereas the Nevada County Food and Toy Run Board of Directors, Chief Executive Officer, Chief Financial Officer, and Vice President, in collaboration with Interfaith Food Ministries, the Nevada County Food Bank, and Head Start, as well as many local stores and volunteers, will brighten many families' holidays with this wonderful annual event. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Nevada County does hereby proclaim December 9th, 2023 as Nevada County Food and Toy Run Day through Nevada County and encourages the community to support this event. And Shannon, I'm going to turn it over to you guys for comments that you have on this.
I want to thank the Board for having us here and for this resolution. And we thank the Board for your support, law enforcement, and our community for supporting us.
There you go.
Like you said, we helped so many families last year, and we hope to do more this year. We just, overwhelming supporters unreal that we get for this toy run. But thank you.
Thank you. Ed Peavy, correct? Yes, great.
Ed Peavy.
Yeah. Thank you, Ed. Shannon?
Thank you. I came today just to extend a heartfelt thank you to you guys for helping us get this back on track after COVID. During COVID was one of the hardest ones. I think we did. None of the kids got to pick their toys and stuff. We had to really, everybody had to social distance and everything. So having the kids walking through the building again and being able to pick their toys is just an amazing experience. So I do encourage any of you, if you haven't been out there for that and would like to, to give one of us a call. And, you know, I would love to have you there, even if you just want to pop in for a few minutes. It's when the bikers come through there, there's nothing like the noise of them arriving and then walking through the hall and dropping their toys and stuff. It's a pretty incredible thing. And we do have bikers that come from all over the state. In the history, we've had a couple of guys come from the UK that came over and rented bikes to come. So it's still one of the only toy runs where the kids actually get to pick their toys. So we have shoppers that help the kids pick toys so the parents aren't picking them for them. And we do have great food for them. This year, we'll have close to 500 meals so that we'll be able to hand out during that day. And the rest of them will be forwarded to our local food banks for their distribution days. So thank you so much for allowing the bikers to use your parking lot and for being in support of this event for so many years. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Shannon. And I just want to point out that this event was almost lost. And COVID just took a huge impact on the team that always did it in the past. And these guys stepped in at the last minute and put it back on. And it's been incredible. And there's a lot of work that goes into this. So I just want to say thank you to you guys.
Thank you. It's pretty incredible. Eric didn't make it today. He had a little bee emergency that he had to deal with this morning. So, but, you know, being able to work with the biker community and the rest of the community to pull this off, you know, we wouldn't be able to do it without the local merchants, you know, that help us and the Downtown Association in Grass Valley that let us go through and allow everybody, you know, downtown again. And it's just such a community effort. It's part of the fabric of our lives up here.
I'd like to open this up. Lisa, kind of going through your town.
So I don't miss a lot about being in business in downtown Grass Valley, but I do miss this, not being there for these events. It is one of the best days during the holidays to come downtown to see the spirit of our community. I'm so happy to see that you're continuing. Are they going to let you go down Mill Street this year? Oh, great. Okay. Because I think it came down my street. I live on Church Street. It came by my house a couple of times, which was great, too. But, and it's December 9th, if I look at the calendar correctly. It starts at usually around 10:00.
So the bikes meet up here. They leave this area at noon. And they usually arrive at the fairgrounds about a quarter to 1:00, between a quarter to 1:00 and 1:00 o'clock. And it's, you know, as you know, probably a 45-minute parade.
Yeah. It's a great event. I encourage people to line the streets so that you can wave and thank the people for showing up and the contribution that they make to the kids. And I will definitely try and make it out to the fairgrounds to check it out because I've always worked, so I never got to do it.
We would love to have you. It's really, I watched the Toy Run from afar for 22 years and then started volunteering for it. And to be this much a part of it now is just, it's incredible. And I did not realize, even though the excitement that you feel on the street is so palpable, you know, I didn't realize until I was in the building and the bikers started walking through what it means.
It's a great event. You can see it on their faces when they come through. And it's people of all ages. I think Dan Miller wrote in it a couple of times, as did a few of the Grass Valley City Council people. So thank you for all the hard work that you've put in on this, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Heidi, roll through your town, too.
Yeah, thank you so much for putting in the work for this wonderful event. I so appreciate how much you're able to bring in and that you're adding food to the gifts as well. You might have done that in the past, but that's so helpful this time of year. And that you're engaging the biker community in this giving effort is really, really wonderful. I hope to see you down there, too. And I'm just very grateful for all the work you put in to make it happen.
Thank you.
Sue?
Well, I would just echo all those. I think it is one of the funnest times of the year. Next to the kids doing On Donation Day, this one is the highlight. And it is fun to see the streets lined with people giving you all support. And I'm going to hope for not a real rainy day like, I love the rain, but we'll just hold off while you guys make your ride. And I do want to say, you know, sometimes when you have somebody that leads the charge on a thing and then, you know, it's hard to find people new to step in and carry on. And you guys have done an amazing job, and it's so appreciated. And it is a fun day out at the fairgrounds. It is a fun day watching, I didn't ever work in town, but we've been there. We're lined up. We have friends that live in houses. And it's an event that we all look forward to and support. So thank you for carrying it on as well as you're doing because it's a blessing. It's a true blessing to our community. So thank you.
It is a rain or shine event, so even if it is raining, we go.
We're still out there.
Okay, Heidi, these are bicycles with motors on them.
I was just thinking that, can a silent e-bike participate in this, where it makes no noise? It's not as fun, I'm sure. Yeah, great work. It's pretty cool to see that you've never missed a beat and done it rain or shine and through COVID and all the other things that come up and the obstacles that get in your way. So thank you. I'm going to try and come out and check it out on both sides, which will be fun for me because I haven't been there. Just a quick question. If people want to get involved or help your organization through either donations or a commitment of time, where would they find the person or people to sign up with?
We have a website that you can go to, and I can leave you my phone number as well. But the website is nevadacountytoyrun.com.
Okay, easy enough. Yeah.
Yeah, and it's on Facebook and a few different places. So, but you can definitely reach out to one of us and we'll help you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, Shannon. Are you going down Mill Street?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Actually, I heard that this year they're going back to their original route, so I'm not...
We did it last year, too. We had to go down Mill Street last year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, for sure. But it should be good. It'll be, you know, it'll be beautiful pictures with all the decorations down there right now, so.
Very good. Yep, me, too.
Bear. It was pouring down rain, and he had his clear garbage bag on it. So the bear was, it was the best. I still have a picture of it somewhere in my thing. It was so good.
Definitely see the greatest stuff there.
You see the greatest stuff on those bikes.
Is there any public comment here? Madam Clerk, is there any callers?
Chair, there are no callers or written comment.
Very good. Then we'll close the public comment portion of it. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hook?
Second.
Second Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
District Four?
District Four, yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We'll see you on the 9th, if not before. All right. Need a break? All right. We're going to take about a five-minute break here, maybe a little longer for everyone to come in. All right. We'll reconvene this Board of Supervisors meeting of November 7th, 2023. And our next item is Brian Foss, our Planning Director, is a resolution adopting development impact mitigation fees for the Nevada County Consolidated Fire District. Brian?
Thank you, Chair Schofield. Good morning, Supervisors. Yes, as you mentioned, this is a resolution to consider updated and amended fire protection fees for the Nevada County Consolidated Fire District. These are referred to as AB 1600 Development Impact Fees that are collected on new development within the fire district boundaries. The fees were last updated in 2016. Earlier this year, the fire district hired Willdan Financial Services to prepare an updated NEXUS study to look at potential changes to the fees that are collected. On September 21st of 2023, the district board held a public hearing to review and consider the NEXUS study and adopted the revised fire fees. The requirement that the Board of Supervisors adopt and approve any special district fire fees is why we're before your board today with the request to consider the revisions to the fire fees that the district board had adopted earlier this year. The fees would increase from 45 cents to 63 cents per square foot for residential construction and from 90 cents to $1.21 per square feet for commercial construction. There are also similar increases for office, industrial, and agriculture would increase from 1 cent to 2 cents per square feet. There is also an annual inflation adjustment built into the fee study, which would go into effect on October 1st of each year to account for annual inflation if the fees were adopted today. The fire district is requesting your board consider the fee study that's in your packet and adopt the resolution that would approve the fees. If so, the fees would go into effect 60 days from today, which would be approximately January 7th. Members from the Consolidated Fire District, Nicole Long and Jason Robitell, as well as Carlos Villarreal from Willdan Financial Services is online and can answer any questions your board may have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. Pretty much in my district, I guess in most of our districts, maybe even some of yours, but I don't really have any questions. So, Sue, you want to? Okay. I think, because this has been heard at the district level, and the Board of Directors have approved this. So, it's like, okay. Is there any public comment on this? Madam Clerk?
Chair, there are no callers and no written comment.
No callers. Chief, is there anything you'd like to say before we vote on this? Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout, second it. Supervisor Hall. Madam Clerk?
District four.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Chief, for all the work you'd put in before this. And thank you, Carlos, for being with us. Bye, Carlos.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Chair Schofield, we have about three minutes until we can go into our next scheduled item. Three minutes.
Okay. In three minutes. Right. All right. Our next scheduled item is another public, notice public hearing. And this is a resolution to approve the local traffic mitigation fees and regional transportation mitigation fees and accept the associated 2023 NEXUS study update. We've done this once before, but Heba, if you would, bring us in on this.
Thank you. Honorable Board members, Chair Schofield, I'm Heba Gindi, Public Works Director. This item was previously considered by the board on September 12th. A presentation at the time was provided by GHG Consultants and staff of NCTC and Public Works. And following a public hearing, the item was approved by the board. However, we were later notified from a legal perspective, the public notice for the NEXUS studies, not the fees, but the NEXUS studies, needed to be 30 days in advance of the hearing rather than 10 days. So, we're bringing the item back to the board consideration. We issued the public notice in early October, 30 days in advance of today's hearing. And staff recommends, following the hearing, to accept the NEXUS studies and approve the local traffic mitigation fees and regional transportation mitigation fees. Once approved, the fees will become applicable 60 days. So, it will be in, in January, 60 days from today's hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Heba. Are there any questions from any board members? Okay. Then we will open this up for public comment. Is there any public comments? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any callers?
No callers or written comment.
Very good. With that, I will entertain a motion to accept this resolution.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hook.
Second.
Second Supervisor Bullock. Madam Clerk?
District four.
District four, yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. Thank you, Heba.
Thank you.
All right. Then let's just go into our Department Head Matters. Let's see. All right. Our agenda item is a resolution, Mr. Dent, approving the execution of a contract with Sierra Roots pertaining to the provision of temporary emergency shelter during extreme weather and public safety power shut-off events in the maximum amount of $41,283. Michael or Mike?
Chair Schofield, members of the board.
Ryan?
Ryan, who are your Health and Human Services Director. And I'm going to kick us off today. The item before you is a contract with Sierra Roots for provision of warming shelter in Nevada City. Also wanted to take the opportunity to give you a broader update on warming shelter efforts in the county. So, I'll just start with that overview and then kick, kick it over to Mr. Dent to present on the actual item in front of us. So, for the presentation today, again, start with a background overview. I wanted to provide updates as well on North San Juan and Truckee Warming Shelters and then move over to the actual item in front of you. So, first of all, background. So, weather, homeless weather sheltering is started off as a grassroots effort in Nevada County as it exists in many communities through Sierra Roots, Church of the Mountains, and North San Juan community members. I want to call out that this is distinct from emergency shelter as a component of the county's emergency preparedness plan, where social services and Health and Human Services play a role in evacuation shelters. Those, that's often conflated with our homeless weather sheltering, but those are distinct functions of the county. Since 2019, subsequent to the board's prioritization of homelessness as a top board priority, the county has partnered with grassroots organizations that are up on this slide to help fund these programs. And in the case of the Nevada City Shelter, taken a more active role in actually calling the opening based on criteria and working closely with our partners at Sierra Roots, with Alice Johnson. And the audi- and the audience today is one of the key Sierra Roots people that makes the shelter happen in Nevada City. I'll just call out that where we draw that line in terms of the criteria is always controversial. And there's always days and nights that fall just on the other side of that. And that often creates concern. Operations are, become challenging and extended and extreme events. So, I think we saw a lot of that last year and the year before with the extreme weather we experienced over the last two winters. Then I also just want to call out that it's not a risk-free activity. Bringing people together with complicated needs in terms of substance use, potentially mental illness, other things, there's risk in that congregate environment as there was through COVID with infectious disease, things like that. And so, it's a balancing of the risk of the outdoor conditions versus the risk of ad hoc sheltering of this nature. And then I also just finally, in terms of background, want to call out that this is really an area where Nevada County goes above and beyond in terms of providing this kind of service. We've been doing some research in other communities, and I've yet to find one that provides winter sheltering for homeless individuals in the way that we do. A lot of places, it still remains that really grassroots, driven by churches, driven by nonprofits, et cetera. And the way that the county is actually involved in helping make the calls is unique to us in the counties that I've identified so far. So, before getting to the Nevada City item, just want to call out specifically the efforts that we have going in North San Juan and Truckee as well. The North San Juan Shelter started really small just with opening the doors of the community center and allowing people to shelter from the winter conditions. They've been, over the last several years, as with many of our homeless services, as new funding comes online and then expires and is replaced by something else, the funding that's been provided to North San Juan has shifted from community initiative funding to last year, they received what we call HAP funding, which is the annual grant of homeless funding that comes from the state. And then now this year, they're going to be a recipient of the CIF funding again. Last year, they used the HAP funding to open for 70 nights in North San Juan. So, significant level of sheltering being provided in North San Juan. They're seeking HAP funding again this year through the COC. So far, they just have the CIE, CIF funding, which is a general fund allocation the board makes available to specific grantees each year. On the Tahoe Truckee side, similarly started as a grassroots effort with faiths, as a faith-based partnership with Church of the Mountains. The funding for the sheltering that they do expanded significantly during COVID, where they started providing day services as well, receiving funding through the COC, the county. Tahoe Forest Hospital has participated. And also in Truckee, we have Placer participating in that sheltering activity, as well as the expanded services that now in partnership with AMI are being provided in Tahoe Truckee. Last year was another unprecedented year in terms of the level of being open in Truckee. They were open for 79 nights last winter in Truckee. I'll call out, and Supervisor Bullock is well aware of the challenges this year. So, this year, they've identified, sorry, AMI has identified issues with staffing and ability to fill the positions that are necessary to operate the shelter. Location, the church space that's been used in previous years is unsustainable and potentially not available this year. And then most recently, the need for a new operator. The current operator has decided that they're not going to be able to provide this service in the upcoming year. So, our team has been jumping in, trying to identify staffing solutions, trying to identify location to get us through this winter, and then an operator that can operate that shelter for this winter to get us through this process. What we have going concurrently in Truckee is a community stakeholder process of which Supervisor Bullock is a part, Supervisor Gustafson in Placer County, as well as representatives from the town of Truckee, from the hospital, from various community entities to look at long-term solutions for Truckee. And so, really with the Truckee Warming Shelter, we're trying to figure out a way to get through this year so we can work on those long, what those long-term solutions look like for the Tahoe Truckee community. They have a lot of things going for them. There are some areas where they don't have access to things like an ongoing every night of the year shelter, but other things that are playing in their favor. And so, we're, I'm looking forward to that work and really focused on getting through this winter in terms of the immediate overnight shelter needs. So, that's the update outside of Nevada City. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Dent.
Good morning, Chair. Greetings to the board. Mike Dent, Director of Child Support, Housing and Community Services. This moving item before you is SR 234807, which is a contract renewal with Sierra Roots. This is the, I would say, fifth or sixth year we've renewed with them. The dollar amounts remain in the same, and there's no general fund involved in this contract renewal. We're using housing, homeless housing assistance funds. And for what we get from this contract, let's look at last year. Another unique year, another 100-year storm we had. And they were open 34 nights. This is in the downstairs at the Vets Hall in Nevada City. We did learn, you know, as two years ago, the extended per-... We did learn, you know, as two years ago, the extended period of being open does tax their volunteer capacity because the volunteers also have their own personal needs during those horrific storms. But what's great with using Sierra Roots is they utilize their network of support, particularly around feeding. A lot of money is saved by their volunteers bringing food into the shelter and providing other needs like clothing during the warming event. So yeah, we're hoping for not another hundred-year storm this year, but if that happens, we'll support Sierra Roots if needed. The criteria is evolving also. This year, one slight change, we made the criteria historically has been five hours consecutively at thirty degrees or less, measured in Nevada City using the National Weather Service. There's some other additional triggering mechanisms if there's a winter storm warning down at two thousand feet or if there's any other event deemed by OES as critical, we could also ask them to open. Example, PSPS is also included in the contract, Public Safety Power Shut-Off. But one thing we're adding this year is, if we have three hours at the triggering temperatures, we're going to turn to wind chill and see what the wind chill is. There's been not a lot of nights last year, but maybe about four, five, six nights where we, you know, the weather forecast, it's science, but it's not solid science and sometimes they're high and sometimes they're right and they're wrong. And there's some close calls where Alice and I are on the phone late at night making a go-no-go decision on basically, we're two-thirds of the way there for triggering. So we're going to look at wind chill as another factor and probably expand a few more nights. Again, we never know what the winters will bring. We've gone as little as I believe it was seventeen nights of sheltering. Last year was a pretty busy year with thirty-four nights. There, you know, as I mentioned, the criteria can be challenging and open to perception by others. We have been working with, you know, messaging, there's a core group, all law enforcement and the cities. Both cities are alerted when we're opening. We try to make that commitment to open twenty-four hours in advance to give everybody time, including Sierra Roots to staff up, but also to get the word out to our outreach workers that we will be opening. And we, as mentioned, will be looking at wind chill. We've had some meetings with this city of Nevada City. They were going to be sending a couple of people to the training and I might want to mention that to the listeners out there. Sierra Roots is holding their annual training at the Vets Hall downstairs this Thursday at six PM, six to eight PM. It's something that's required. If you're going to volunteer for them, you need to learn their way of operating the shelter. And yes, Nevada City was going to send a couple of staff. They've had some challenges with getting them available those dates and I'll be working with Alice and Sean Grayson to try to get their couple of staff identified. And the reason they're interested is they want to know how it works and be available in case there is an event where we can kind of cobble together some quick reacting opening efforts, possibly less than the twenty-four hour notice. And for reference to those thirty-four days, you know, the data that Sierra Roots collects is pretty good and there's three hundred, sorry, nine hundred and thirty-eight individual contacts between those thirty-four nights of that. Six hundred and seventy-seven individuals stayed the night. What that means is some people come in and grab a mill and then take off. And the criteria for basically, once you're in after ten o'clock, you need to stay in. If they don't want to follow that rule, then they can come grab some food, do the best outreach work you can with those individuals and then they mosey on into the night. But still, six hundred and seventy-seven stayed the night. That averages about twenty people a night and it ebbs and flows. Traditionally smaller turnouts earlier on in the season, but a nice big old storm that we've had the last couple of years really bring out folks that need to be warm and dry. And with that, we respectfully request any questions you have, but also to consider approving the resolution before you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Ryan. I'd like to point out to my colleagues here and to you guys too, I apologize a bit here for the last several weeks, several meetings, we've been working on this sound system. And honestly, I had trouble understanding both of you. I don't know less of an empty chamber that we've got an echo that's coming through, so I kind of apologize. So if you've stated things and we're asking you something you've already, we apologize and Jeff and I have already talked about it. We're going to be doing some more studies in here to try to get this better. Sue, you want to kick this off?
Well, I don't really have any questions except for that a lot of appreciation goes out to the work that goes into making this happen. And the other thing about it too is, and I just was, we're looking at thirty-four nights, but those didn't include some of the emergency shelters that we had to open during the snow, correct? So there was actually more that went on than those thirty-four nights. So that was interesting. And then, and I'm interested to see how we work out with this. I'm sure the city of Truckee is working on some of this too as well. They're not engaging, so that's kind of interesting to me. Yeah, so we can talk more like that because, I mean, we know how cold it gets up in Truckee and what's happening there. So appreciate the work and what goes into this and there's so much more. This is just one part of a contract and how staff and everybody works on this, so thank you for that. And hopefully we just won't have, I like winter. I do like winter, but not in an emergency situation. I got to give a shout to North San Juan. They've done a tremendous job up there working in their little shelter that they put together and it's created a new, some of this kind of stuff creates new energy in a community as well. Like, so now they provide food and they're doing state, so it really has a rippling effect sometimes when you have to come together in an emergency. So I'd love to see how the communities work together and make this happen.
And on that note, with North San Juan, they were open seventy nights last year. Quietly doing that and also they were averaging between seven and twelve people a night. One effort we're working towards the last couple of years is to get them to utilize the homeless management information system so we can actually track those people and identify them and do secondary outreaches after the fact. So you're right, the little engine that can and we're trying to bring them into the data fold, which is, can be a challenge when you volunteer, right?
No, but thanks. I appreciate that. Every little bit keeps moving us forward, so.
Yeah, thanks. I just have one question. So if you, if we have to go beyond what the prediction of how many nights it's going to be open, is there any sort of contingency funding available in case we have to make the decision to keep it open longer? I know last year there was some issues with closing down when we had the extended storm and then it got moved over to the Grass Valley Vets Building and there's just a lot of moving parts with this, so I'm just wondering if there's backup if we need additional funding for this.
So I would say that there are a host of issues that arise if an event is extended and then there's difficulty accessing the site. I'll just say this is a picture of a vehicle that was on my street that was blocking the plow from actually coming through so that I could get to the shelter and work it. And what we do is pull out all the stops and staff volunteer predominantly from social services, but across the board. I wouldn't say that funding is necessarily the barrier when an emergent situation like that, we step in and try to make it happen and then especially when there's a declared emergency, there's a process afterwards to figure out how to reimburse and get it paid for.
I think for all three of these shelters, they lean on the community. As I mentioned, food for Sierra Roots, there's other things, clothing. All these three entities are deeply reliant on their neighbors to help out and that extends the contract. Instead of buying dinner, if you can have it prepared and delivered, you're saving a lot of money right there.
Well, it's funny, Sue, you mentioned that if the town of Truckee is involved in it and I know the city of Grass Valley is not involved in it other than through law enforcement. So it's really hard because the cities just don't have money available for any sort of social services like this. But they are the ones who have the residents and have the impacts for it. So I think potentially working more closely with our partners is going to be valuable to see how they can help, either providing space or volunteers or some sort of resources.
And to Grass Valley and Nevada City's credit, the police departments, they do provide a lot of riots during shelter nights and they do it without hesitation.
Now, everybody pulls together when they need to. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for bringing it forward. I volunteered at the Nevada City Shelter and I learned so much just being there for, I guess I was there for maybe four hours, four and a half hours. And it was, I learned so much about how the system works and what the needs of the people were that are coming and going from there and everybody, I donated my cell phone. Everybody wanted to use the phone and we made a bunch of phone calls, you know, and I didn't, you just take that for granted that people can make phone calls, but so thank you to all the volunteers and everybody, including county staff that make those possible. We kind of have gotten into this crisis situation in Truckee. Kathy Foley is no longer operating our warming shelter, so that's what happened. She notified us, I believe, October first, Ryan. And kind of out of the blue, we had had some other precursor meetings, but it's just game over, no more warming shelter. Which in Truckee is critical, so Ryan and staff have been really helpful in helping us convene a meeting and essentially there was already this other process in play. Truckee Homeless Advisory Committee meeting scheduled, so we just kind of pivoted that meeting into more of a tactical crisis management approach, trying to find a solution to the warming shelter. You know, we don't, there is no infrastructure in Truckee and East County, so if somebody is facing an unsheltered night, they will end up in the emergency room. And so I talk with and work closely with the hospital district when that happens because it impacts their ability to serve the other people that are peak period recipients of medical support, like car accidents and orthopedics from ski injuries and the tourist time. So it's kind of this compounding effect. I'm going to come, you know, we're going to talk about it again, I think at the strategic workshop, kind of touching on that, which is a great opportunity for the board to understand, you know, where we have service deficiencies, what is appropriate. And Supervisor Swarthout brings up a great point, which is at this point, the town of Truckee is just entering into the support space around homelessness and unhoused population. So I'm glad to see that they're at the table. Placer County is a contributor through the COC, but not necessarily as directly as Nevada County is with other areas. So getting all the partners at the table, I think, is how we're going to make a difference. It's everybody's responsibility and like you were pointing out, it's a community-driven issue and it will probably only be solved with a community solution and to Mike's point, you know, it takes everybody bringing food and other resources and opening the doors. I do think that we have been deficient, in my opinion, in providing a framework in Eastern County for other people to connect to. And so I'm looking forward with Nevada County leading the way and I feel like Ryan is doing that. We were in the meeting. It was a great meeting. I was actually really happy. We got all those partners around the table and talked about really candidly, what can we do to fix it? And how are we going to get there, not only tactically for the warming shelters, but the whole homeless population issue? And I just want to mention that East County and West County, I'm not advocating for apples to apples. We have a much broader diverse of need, diverse needs down here with a much greater population of unhoused people. There is a smaller group, but a needy group of people that need our support in East County. So we're going to have to figure out what's the appropriate level and also what's the appropriate size and scale and how permanent is that? There's not a lot of property in Truckee. One of the sites that's been discussed is a county-owned parcel behind the Joseph Center. We, based on staff's interaction, we, you know, we both asked, Ryan and I both asked, we want to look comprehensively at all the solutions, including rec center, town of Truckee, county, unincorporated parcels, to understand where we could possibly find a solution to this problem without just immediately looking at the county facilities. Alice and I spent some time, and I know I'm going on and on here, but I want to give you an update, but Alice and I spent a lot of time with Sheriff Moon and her staff talking about using the annex next to the jail, which poses some logistical problems related to security and the population, and Ryan touched on and Mike touched on, kind of the, it's, there's some liability when you bring different groups together. So it's a very complicated process and I feel like in California, the reason why it hasn't been solved to a higher degree is because it is highly complicated. And I think from, at the state level, we can't assume that money is going to solve it. It's going to take different solutions to do it. And finally, I just wanted to mention that if you look at our overall numbers comprehensively from the county, Ryan and our entire county team are servicing this population. We see people getting houses. We see them going into supportive housing. We're building houses, we're building units, but there's more inflow than there is people going out the door. So we just have to recognize that the work you're doing is, we appreciate it, we see it, we understand what you're doing. We just need to do more and we need to find creative ways to handle it. So we'll probably be coming back on the Truckee thing with some specific asks for funding to just tactically deal with what we have to handle for December, January, February, and March is really what I'm looking at, just keep people out of the elements for that period of time. There's not much difference between fifteen degrees and twenty-five degrees if you're in Truckee and you're outdoors. If you're outdoors at twenty-five degrees, it's risky. If you're at fifteen degrees, which, is that the right threshold? Am I using the right figure there, Ryan?
I believe so.
Something close to that. Ours opens at fifteen degrees. When it's fifteen degrees, it's really cold. So just, you know, be aware that seventy-nine nights are barely covering the most extreme version of exposure for our community. And that's what I talked about earlier in apples to oranges, when we talk about that, our community may require more costly solutions to keep those doors open more because we have different temperatures, we're different communities. And recognizing that may cost us a little more. We may have to find different partners or pay for service providers that are different than what we see here in front of us in this PowerPoint today. So, you know, I just want to extend my appreciation to Ryan. He's been up in Truckee, actually on the meetings. We've been inside the meetings and just thanks, Ryan, for pulling everybody together. And thanks, Mike, for presenting this to us. I look forward to approving this.
Thank you. Thanks for presenting this. Thanks for coming in before the season starts and helping us see that everything's been thought through and is set. Also, thank you for working with Nevada City. I know there were some issues last year and it looks like you've got a plan in place to do all this. And, you know, I want to acknowledge the difficulty that you're experiencing in different parts of the county. I also want to just kind of remind folks of the framework that we have here, which is that the county, and this is sort of going back to the fact that we're stepping out beyond, we're going above and beyond in the county. The county is providing a great deal of the need for these emergency services and homeless. We're providing low-income housing, we're providing homeless shelters, we're providing transitional shelters. We're providing every single one of the services. All of the services are funded by and provided by the county. And the agreement, the past model was, we did all of that and the cities provided the shelters. And what we've seen, what it seems to be the issue is that that's been difficult for the cities to stand that out. They don't have the funding, just like we don't. And the weather has made it more difficult and then we have outlying county areas where there isn't a city to provide the shelter. And so we've had to step in and provide that additional funding and assistance. I just want to make it clear, we all have to step in, we all have to work together. We're pitching in more because we need to. But my understanding was that was the model and it maybe isn't working anymore. That we could rely on the cities on their own to do the shelter while we're doing the other, all the other services. That's just not working anymore. Just want to acknowledge, is that sort of the way it's looking for us, Ryan?
Well, I'll just say that there's, I want to call out that we do have a COC and there is state funding that flows through the COC as well. We have Joe Nake in the audience today with Hospitality House, definitely a key player in homeless services. And not all of that funding definitely comes from the county, so there are other players. I think the, and I don't know if you can hear me based on the previous feedback on the mic, but I'll say that that role, that lack of clarity in terms of roles between city and county is emblematic of homelessness in California. And it's one of the things that CSAC, through their advocacy, was asking the state to clarify and to date, that's not clarified. And as I've been out researching and my team has been out researching other warming shelter models to see how we can improve, it's all across the map. There are some places where it's solely grassroots, nonprofit-driven, some places where the city's playing a strong role in that. None that I've found where the county is taking the lead the way we do in the Sierra Roots Nevada City Shelter. But often there's a funding relationship where the city will stand something up and the county will fund it or and typically it's an OES-triggered emergent event. Not every time the weather hits this criteria, we're going to open. So it is part of the landscape in homelessness in California is that there are fifty-eight different approaches and this is one that's unique to us.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. I think it's important just to note that and acknowledge that. I know that people can get frustrated, especially when there's an emergency and people are at risk and want to at risk and want to point fingers, but the fact is everyone is doing what they can and we are going above and beyond. And we do need the cities to participate as, to the best of their ability equally. I want to just go back to this previous slide, just a quick clarification. Does the H hap funding, that is state funding? And that's only, that comes every year, so it's not consistent?
It's Homeless Housing Assistance Program, I believe is the acronym. And there are several rounds of it. So we're now on hap round four, I believe, and there's anticipated to be future rounds. And typically that will come in a tranche from the state that's available to COCs and then it can be spent over a three-year period. So, but it is appropriated funding, it's not an ongoing funding commitment. And the state has been increasingly putting conditions on that. You'll recall Supervisor Huck and I went down and were part of the convening with the governor because the governor was making certain demands in terms of the homeless action plans in order to have access to the funding. And those things are still present in terms of benchmarks that have to be hit for the county broadly, not just the county government, to have access to this funding.
Okay, so that's been a constant challenge too, that it's not consistent, that we have to advocate for it every single year, that it's making it harder and harder for us to get it. But that is the funding we're sort of relying on to use this. And then the CIF funding, that is county, that's funding we, the supervisors have agreed to addition, out of our general fund, is it?
Right.
To add on to what we're already putting into this. And again, this is one of the only services that generally speaking, the county wasn't going to be providing, the cities were. So we're adding in to that as well. I just, you know, we all have to work together. I just want to make sure we understand the landscape, that the city's been deeply, deeply involved in all of this for a long time and has its own struggles with funding. I think that's all I have. I know that, I assume we're going to be continuing to work closely with the Nevada City, so there's no more surprises and they're clear on how difficult it is to stand up something overnight and that we're all contributing staff and resources and, yeah. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Can I ask a question in regards to what Supervisor Hall said? So when you say that the cities stand up the, the warming shelters, in my experience coming from the city of Grass Valley, there was never any involvement from the city except with law enforcement. There's no money, there was no money set aside, there's no city facility that is really going to accommodate that the homeless shelters, you know, the warming shelters. And it, the two buildings that they have been using are both county buildings. It's the Grass Valley Vets Building and the Nevada City Vets Building. So if we are, if that's the model that we're looking at, then we need to have some conversations with the cities and ask them how they want to participate because that, in, you know, in my experience coming from the city, I don't recall us ever being involved with.
So those conversations have been going on over the years, I would say. And that, I'm just saying, that is the model that has, has been in place in the state of California or is from what we know from other counties because the county is doing so much of the other part and because the population centers are in the cities. But that's like as Ryan's saying, we're trying to cobble together whatever works, whatever we can do that works. But, and I don't know if Grass Valley wants, wants or needs a shelter in their city.
Well, they have hospitality houses in the city of Grass Valley and it's a private nonprofit who, you know, they raise a tremendous amount of their own money and then the county contributes to some of the functions that they do there. I don't know what the model's going to be like up in Truckee, if there's a private nonprofit that's going to come in. Sierra Roots is also a private nonprofit. So it seems to me the collaboration here is with the county and our private nonprofits. And if we want the cities involved, we need to have more conversation with them.
I think what you described, the convening authority of the county, understanding the funding landscape and all the partners is a great person to convene and bring people together around that. So I would wholeheartedly support what you just described as a model going forward for our board to think about. It doesn't mean that we're paying for every bit of it. We're responsible for the final outcome of every single solution, but it just means that we have the ability to bring parties together and bring people together around the table, which is what I felt like we are part of, among other nonprofit, you know, people in Truckee and organizations in Truckee. But just as one board member, I like the concept of thinking that way.
Any other comments?
Ryan, did you want to correct anything that I've said or that anybody else has said? If I mischaracterized any of this?
Well, I appreciate the comments about cobbling something together. I think that's how it has played out over the last five years. And there's not a single model that we can point to and say, this is the county's model that the cities are doing this and we're doing that. I think it would be enormously helpful to get everybody together and talk about what those roles and responsibilities should be. Grass Valley did play a role the first year of the board's priority in terms of overflow sheltering at Hospitality House, where the city contributed an amount and the county matched that amount. But since then, that hasn't recurred. And then Nevada City's definitely been a partner in terms of location and being supportive of the shelter being there. And Truckee's emerging as a partner in sheltering in Eastern County. So it's a fluid and evolving situation that could use some clarity and focus.
Thank you.
Well, I don't need to add too much on here, but I, I am thinking that in addition to organizations such as Sierra Roots, and thank you for what they do, it does take a tremendous amount of manpower to run these. So I'm just wondering, how do you go about recruiting the people you need to, to man these facilities?
I'd be happy to answer that. So using Sierra Roots as an example, they have their outreach efforts, volunteer meetups indeed. They've advertised for shelter managers on, on a public employment platforms. But it comes down to training them and that this Thursday's training is really a, a witness test on how, how deep their bench is going to be this year. And last year they saw a huge increase. You know, Alice is saying she's thinking it's going to be even bigger this year with volunteers because they've been working throughout the year to cultivate and retain volunteers. They, this isn't the only thing they do. Sierra Roots does. They do have their Thursday meal at the Baptist Church every, every week. So there's other efforts and they have other outreach work going on, just to use them as an example.
I've been under the impression that a number of our own employees have volunteered or is there some type of arrangement we do with our, with our folks?
We've had county employees volunteer for Sierra Roots, but then also when their capacity starts to be exhausted, if they're open for two weeks, as was happening during the winter storms, and there's a declared emergency, that's where the county start, has started to jump in with DSWs. If there's a sheltering need identified by the EOC, then, then our emergency shelter role kicks in and we have staff that participate in that way.
Yeah. We have posted the training going on this Thursday. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, the city of Nevada City was interested in sending a couple of staff members to it. I would not be shocked if there are county employees at the training on their own time just to get certified, for lack of a better word, on volunteering.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? All right, is there any public comment on this issue?
I am the credit director of the Sierra Roots No Place to Go Project. And I'm one of the people that's always saying you could do more. But I'm not here to say that. I'm here to thank you and thank all the people who put this together. Nobody gets out of homeless alone. We all need help. I, I've been homeless, I know what it's like. So I've been to the shelters most of the nights last year and it's a very good place. You can't help people who are dead. So thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other public comment? Madam Clerk?
Chair, we do have one caller.
We do have?
Yes, we do have one caller.
Okay. Bring the caller in.
Thank you.
Yes, hello Board Supervisors, Matthew Coulter, very important topic. I'm sorry, there's not more people speaking to it. We're paying one way or another in the last few days. We've had the Dorsey fires in homeless camp, we've had Bennett Street fires, we've had two fires in one day right up against the new navigation center on Sutton Way. So these responses by multiple fire trucks and police and then people taken to jail as the de facto homeless shelter or to the hospital because if they're not committing a crime, they kind of sometimes give them the option to go to the CSU. And a lot of the homeless know that if they just claim one thing or another, they will go to the CSU, which is just packed. The waiting room at the hospital is packed with a lot of the homeless. I mentioned the fires. I've mentioned before that we need a safe space for people to camp where it is not illegal. People were arrested underneath the bridge today, or actually yesterday in Nevada City because it's a dry spot. So any dry spot is suspect, the police know where they're at. And a huge amount of police resources are going to picking up the homeless and moving them or just moving them along to some new place. And last but not least, my friend Monty, who was a volunteer with Sierra Roots for many years, was found dead in the woods, have a gunshot wound and there was no gun around, but they deemed it a suicide quasi. And he's still laying on a slab down in Placer County at the morgue. And I just think it's behooves the county to keep track of all the people that are homeless or in that situation and that come up dead because no one is seeming to keep track of them and they just kind of go to Potter's Field or they're just kind of forgotten about. And there's been so many. We used to have a memorial on Christmas Eve and run through the names each year. And I think the last time I was there, the last time we did it, there was like 12. That's a lot of people that, you don't, they never make the paper, you never hear about them, there's no obituary and sad situation. But thank you guys, keep after it.
Thank you, Matthew. Any other public comments? No other?
No, Chair.
Very good. I'll close the public comment portion and I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'm moved.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout. Second Supervisor Bullock. Madam Clerk?
District four. District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes. Very good, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm going to be sticking with you for the next item.
Oh, are you still up? Okay. I don't see Phoebe. All right, so our next two agenda items. Ryan, and this is a resolution, the first one is a resolution accepting Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Program award and execution. This is in the amount of $3,601,814. And the second resolution is a contract with Foothill House of Hospitality utilizing a portion of these dollars. So Ryan, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, and I'll get out of the way shortly. I'm sitting in for Phoebe Bell today, who's participating in a state-level convening, leading into the leadership role that she has risen to at the state level and giving Nevada County that outsized voice that she has in the behavioral health system. I'm excited today to introduce these items. They are related items. It's the acceptance of a grant coming from the state for what's called Behavioral Health Bridge Funding and then a contract for, with Hospitality House to implement the first portion of that funding. And so it's an exciting opportunity to provide additional housing beds to our homeless population that struggles with behavioral health issues. And so I'm going to turn it over to Brendan Phillips, who is our program manager, working in homelessness with Behavioral Health, and Joe Nake with Hospitality House to talk about both of these items.
Brendan, Joe, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Schofield and members of the board. I'm Brendan Phillips, Homeless Services Program Manager with Nevada County and I'm joined by Joe Nake from Hospitality House. We're here to talk about the Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Program that we are asking you to approve today. Control that or? Click this? Got it. So background on Behavioral Health Bridge Housing, I'm going to do the background part and then I'll pass it over for the program, the specifics on the local version of the program. So background on Behavioral Health Bridge Housing funding is, it was signed into law September of 2022, AB 179. It created $1.5 billion statewide through the Department of Healthcare Services to counties and tribal entities. $3.6 million was awarded to Nevada County Behavioral Health and will fund three years of Behavioral Health Bridge Housing programming in Nevada County. BHBH programming will be implemented in alignment with the Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment Care Program. That's also known as Care Courts that you may have heard of, another law that was passed in this last legislative session that will be going into effect in a year. It also aligns Behavioral Health Bridge Funding along very well with the Nevada County Strategic, Joint Strategic Plan Goal to Reduce Unsheltered Homelessness. So very high-level details on the program. It's going to be 30 beds of interim low-barrier shelter. And Joe will speak more to that. It's going to target individuals with severely mental illness, severe mental health issues and who are experiencing homelessness. It will prioritize people who are unsheltered. It integrates into Care Court and provides interim housing for individuals engaged in court-based programs. So there's a very strong tie between Behavioral Health Bridge Housing and those who will be entering the program. And also many of the court programs you've probably heard of, like Diversion Court, Diversion IST, Care Courts coming on. We also have Mental Health Court and Drug Court, those kinds of court processes. So these will be beds available immediately to people who are engaged in those programs so that they can get stable in housing while they're going through the, the needs for treatment and other, other goals that they might have. It provides wraparound case management at the behavioral health sites. It leverages CalAim. So I'm the supervisor for the Enhanced Care Management Team. So the CalAim initiatives that are out in the world, the community supports and Enhanced Care Management will be integral into supporting the members of the BH, the participants in the BHBH program. And then its goals, really high-level stability, coordinated engagement, navigation into permanent housing. That is the goal of the program for every participant in the program. So I'll just wrap up and pass it on to Joe by saying that we have a lot of things that we've done very, over the last five years, that have been very forward-thinking as a county. And we, we use BHBH in a way that builds on some of those lessons. And so it's really an opportunity for us to take some of the coordinated lessons that we've learned with our partners like Hospitality House in terms of how to conduct outreach, how to do good engagement, how to create navigation strategies that get people housed. We're going to be leveraging a lot of quality data and case conferencing processes that we've built over many years now and strengthened every one of those years to support people in getting them housed faster. And that was in partnership and consultation with our Built for Zero partners. We'll continue to integrate all the healthcare, looking at people as a whole person with physical healthcare needs, mental healthcare needs. And that's what we've learned from our home team, that you can't just have one kind of healthcare system at one time. Many of these people who we're working with need physical and mental health wrapped into one and no barrier between the two. We'll also embrace a low-barrier model, which we've learned over the years is, is a way to get people who are unsheltered to enter shelter. When we have lots of barriers to get you in, it just means people don't come in. And we really want to get the people who have lasted, who've been out there the longest to come in and engage in services. So it's a very low-barrier program. And finally, we're going to collaborate and it's what we do very well. We work with all of our partners and one of those partners, one of our strongest partners is Hospitality House. And so I'll pass it over to Joe and he can talk to you about specifics on the local program and then we'll take questions.
Thank you, Brendan. Thank you, Chair Schofield, members of the board. So we want to lay the groundwork for success here. We want to front-load the investment. The idea- The idea is to convene an advisory council of individuals with lived experience. We want feedback from the participants, what they want to get out of it, what they want it to look like. And engagement is key here, engaging with law enforcement and community and neighborhood engagement. We've learned from things like Sierra Guest Home and with the Community Resource Center that having your neighbors and other community members and business owners that these programs may affect, that we have buy-in from them, that they have a point of contact. And then, of course, identifying potential clients using the court system, as Brendan has talked about, current home team ECM and behavioral health clients. And then we want to target geographic locations. Sutton Way was mentioned earlier, obviously, our Nevada City partners with some high utilizers there, as well as reaching out to our Tahoe Truckee folks. And then the next thing we're going to be doing is identifying master lease housing. The first 90 days, we want to ramp up using local motels. In order to get folks off the street quickly, we want to provide those 30 beds, as Brendan has mentioned, so utilizing local motels as we've done in the past, and then identify the master lease housing. I'm happy to report that we've already had a couple of local homeowners reach out to us, so that we might be able to ramp up with that a little bit quicker. Once that's done, hire a live-in case manager, caretaker of sorts, so we'll be providing employment for individuals experiencing homelessness or have past lab experience. And then comprehensive data tracking utilizing our HMIS system. These are some of the evidence-based practices Brendan also touched on. Housing first, that's the low-barrier model, harm reduction, making sure participants have Narcan, fentanyl, and xylazine test strips. We use case conferencing and then diversity, equity, and inclusion to make sure that we're helping out our underserved populations. And then outcomes, provide the 30 new beds of capacity. This will speak directly to the Homeless Action Plan mentioned earlier by Mr. Groover, the key element of reduction and unsheltered homelessness, and utilize streamlined approach to housing people faster. The idea is move people through this program so that we get more folks off the street and get them housed. And finally, leverage the CalAim community supports through our managed care plans, soon to be managed care plan singular, utilizing housing deposits. Thank you.
We'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you. Lisa, you want to start this?
I don't really have any questions. I think it's pretty straightforward, what you've presented. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I really appreciate the partnership that the county has with Hospitality House, not just in this, but in some other things that I've worked on with you guys over the years. So I think this is a step that we need to try and get more people housed, especially people who have behavioral health and mental health issues. So it's really important work, and I'm really grateful to you for what you're doing.
Just to clarify, we are having a discussion now on, first, the acceptance of the grant, and then, secondly, on the acceptance of a contract with Hospitality House. So we'll be discussing the two of these together, and then we'll do two separate resolutions on it. Were you comfortable with that, Lisa? Sue, you want to?
Thank you. Good presentation. I'm always amazed at the amount of work you guys do. It's incredible. Couple of questions. So this funding is only a three-year program. So this is an interesting thing. So we got three years, we were providing 30 beds, and at the end of three years, how are we going to keep funding this? So this is one thing that always runs through my mind as we work through these programs. The other thing, just curiosity, we did that outreach on sugarloaf. That was fantastic, right? We brought everyone in, we housed them in hotels until we could get go. Is there any data about how many people are still in housing and how many people went back into homelessness?
The last, oh, go ahead. The last time I checked, we were still at about 75% housed of the people that we housed.
That's fantastic. So I mean, there's just data to show that this program is working. I think the big challenge is where we find houses. You know, housing is going to continue, we're growing it as quickly as we can, and with the cost of housing, we know how challenging that is. So that, all of that really interests me. I just, I do, I just wonder what happens at the end of that three years. Maybe there'll be more funding that comes in from the state when they see the progress that we're making in a rural community like we do here. I don't know, I mean, Hospitality House is a huge hub, and the work we're doing and our outreach team that goes, because the bottom line is, you can't force people in. That's the other thing. I mean, we work on that on a daily basis where we have folks that don't want to come in, and your team is still out there working and providing, and the county resources that are being used here for behavioral health and human services is, it goes beyond what most people even realize the staff is doing here. So, I mean, I don't know, but again, there's a passion for what you do, and we're lucky we have you both working in that area, as well as the staff. I've watched what Rachel and her team, what Mike Dit and his team, what Ryan Grover does, and so sometimes I feel like we're spinning, but then you see the light at the end of the tunnel where something really great is happening. So again, thank you for the work you're doing. It's a good presentation and look forward to seeing this pass, obviously.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, what we're contributing to the Hospitality House is not insignificant through the state funds, and this is a huge new input, but I had the same question that Sue did about what happens after the three years. And one other question I have, I understand that you're going to hire live-in folks, the plan is to have live-in folks in the houses. What about staff to manage this? I'm really concerned about your job and Nancy's and the folks at the Hospitality House who are running Hospitality House. Are you adding this whole effort on without hiring additional staff for that part for the administration?
This funding stream and the budget, actually budgets for two additional case managers, and we've just promoted somebody to an outreach manager to oversee the whole program, and of course, I'll be overseeing that.
So you'll have two more people to help with this?
Two more people. Some funding streams will be kind of switching around next fiscal year, so we will be able to add additional staff.
In addition to the live-in folks that you'll be bringing?
Correct. The live-ins are also a part of this contract, so we'll hopefully have two more houses, two more live-ins, two more case managers, plus our existing outreach team.
Right, that's great. I mean, you're going to be dealing with some of the most difficult people who need a lot of services. So again, the concern that it's going to be super important and super helpful, and then we're going to have to hope that there's more funding coming down to keep it going. I just want to go back to the first slide, just really briefly. I have to, I mean, can you go back to that first slide, Brendan? Oh, easy enough. I just want to say, you know, I'm reflecting back on actually six years ago or seven years ago, before I came on the board, the board and the county leadership at the time had consciously decided they were not going to be involved in dealing with the homeless population. There was no involvement, except for what the normal, regular social services were doing. Just the first one with all your innovation, yeah. So I'm just so unbelievably proud of this county, how much we've stepped in to this problem to solve it, how innovative we've been, how far we've come. I mean, this, all of this, all of this has been stood up in six years. It's amazing, and I know we are leading the state and we're leading the rural counties in our innovations and pilot projects and finding the money. So I can't say enough, I just, how proud I am and how of all of you and Hospitality House and your staff as well, all the changes that you've had to roll with through COVID, through neighborhood issues, through pets or no pets, you know, crisis care beds. So I just, it's really a lot. I want you guys to think about that. Since six years, all of this has been created from nothing in some cases. So really, really, really proud of us and all of you, and happy that we've got a good plan for this money, and knock on wood, we'll be able to get a good program going and find the future funding for it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Brendan, I think you've talked like in the past about housing first. I've heard presentations from you where you're laser-focused on getting people into housing first and then solving all these other issues that you've outlined here, which staying focused on that, I'm sure is a journey in and of itself through the bureaucratic, different funding cycles and grants. So thank you to you and your whole team that does that. I had a couple more specific questions. I'm trying not to get in the weeds, but I have to a little bit just because of East County. But when you talked about reaching into Truckee and doing some additional outreach, what exactly does that mean?
We'll be reaching out to, I've worked very closely with Jasmine Bro up there. I know that there's a few folks that will probably qualify for this program, so we'll be in constant communication about that and work out through the referral process.
Okay, that sounds good. And then what are some of the partners? I know Sierra Community House, and what are some of the partners on the east side that we're going to utilize? Because there's a lot of grant funding, obviously, going for the program on this, the service provider on this side of the hill. Do you have another provider set up in East County?
North Tahoe Truckee is primarily my point of contact up there.
Excuse me?
North Tahoe Truckee through AMI.
Oh, okay. Yeah, AMI. Housing, yes, okay. And that's going to be your primary point of contact for service provision in East County with this grant funding?
Supervisor Bullock, I think our primary contact will be Jasmine on our county side, who's organized the homeless advisory committee that you referenced earlier, but then the North Tahoe Truckee Homeless Services, that's AMI, that's the service provider that's up in the area. And so certainly, we've talked about, well, how would we be able to bridge that gap for people in eastern county who might need a behavioral health bridge housing bed, given that we're all one county? And so that's going to have to be a coordinated effort to make sure those people have access to beds when they're available and they're qualified and eligible for them. So it's a challenge to make sure that we're always talking with those partners about making those beds available. And I think it'll flow through Jasmine, but then the advisory committee and our contracted partner in AMI.
Okay, understood. That makes sense to me. And so if somebody needed an increased level of care that they may not find in East County, we would help them or find services to get them down to the side where there's different levels of care?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, perfect, thank you. And then just one piece, the cost, obviously to procure beds with the way that you've outlined here in East County is going to be dramatically different in cost. Is that, have you thought or talked about that internally with the amount?
Yes, correct. We have, thank you for the question, Supervisor Bullock. We certainly talk about the ability to stand up any operation like this in Truckee as being very challenging with the costs associated with it, and that's why we've chosen to pilot the project here in Western County. And I think Joe Moore alluded to, you know, we need to be in good communication and also look to expand when we have the ability to do that and when we have a program designed we think could work. And all the conversations we've had about emergency sheltering up in Truckee, they all kind of flow together, right? Truckee's a unique, very unique situation, and we need to make sure that the partners have not only the emergency sheltering conversation going on, but also how do we get services when people have severe and persistent mental illness and who are on the street? They might not even be coming to the emergency shelter in Truckee, and they might need a higher level of care. So we need to be always having those conversations, yeah.
Teleforce Health Systems has had this recent kind of business expansion into that area, as you know, and trying to diversify their service offering to mental and behavioral health, substance use disorder. So I'm hoping, and I know that Jasmine will be the contact to connect some of those other community resources, but if we want to look into some of the other organizations to provide capacity there, certainly reach out to me, and I'm happy to help you contribute, making meetings or making connections or making that, you know. That's it for me, thank you.
I just need to make one comment, Heidi. I don't recall the board seven years ago or further back making a conscious effort to say, no, we're not interested in homelessness. I think one of the huge differences is homelessness has become such a huge problem, and a ton of dollars have come our way, which means we've been able to create some of these programs, and you guys have been wonderful with this. But, you know, we get $3 million and go, oh, yeah, okay, another $3 million. I mean, seven, eight years ago, that would have been huge. Now it's like, okay, another $3 million. But you have to be feeling the same frustration that I think we do. You know, these are wonderful programs, but the last caller came in and said, hey, two fires out around the navigation center. It almost, because housing is such a huge issue, it almost has to go beyond the housing too. I mean, you have to be down there, and I know you do, I know you're down there with those folks, but it's like, I think we're all very concerned about what's going on within that commercial neighborhood that goes there. I mean, you hear things coming back and saying, oh, you know, one particular business up the road from Hospitality House saying, man, I don't know if we can continue to operate up here. So the frustration continues despite some of these very, very good programs that are going on. I wouldn't want anyone to think that we don't care that there's two fires that go on just in a week's time up there, and I know you guys feel those same frustrations. And I don't know, Joe, maybe you'd like to comment on that, or Brendan?
Thank you, Chair Schofield. I'm at the Navigation Center Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., so I'm not 100% about where the fire conversation has. I'm not sure, because I was there all day, every day for five days a week. But we, the Navigation Center area and Hospitality House being right up the road, and our partnership with the home team and my Enhanced Care Management providers are on the Sutton area daily. We've planned, we have planned and started to engage our business partners on the Sutton area, and BHBH as a program, our Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Program, will certainly geographically look at that impacted region as a primary prioritization for who we want to move into these units. We see these folks every day and we work with them very closely, and we're getting them ready for the fact that we have something new coming online that can bring some of those, that takes some of that pressure off that one small geographic area, because we certainly see it every day, and we definitely want to reach out and be really good partners with our business community and our business partners. We talk with the Knights Paint folks, we move down to the Goodwill there, and then our center is right there, and we're working with them all the time to try to alleviate some of the concerns that they might have. So that's a tie into the Behavioral Health Program that we're talking about today, which is to say that we can take this funding and look at some geographically specific areas and say, who's in this area? Let's get them wrapped into this program, and that can drastically reduce tension in that one area, and we can build off that.
Thank you, Brendan, and I don't mean to be critical, okay? I mean, I really appreciate the work that's going on out there. But you know that Navigation Center means an awful lot, at least in my mind, to say, okay, this is really how we're kind of getting control on this, and we hope that it's beneficial to that area and not become more of a detriment. So it's a challenge, as you guys have, and it's greatly appreciated. But there's a lot of work to do, lots of work. Any other comments? Okay, CNN, I will open this up. Is there any public comment on this matter? Yes, you may.
Well, since I am kind of the representative of people who are homeless here today, I think what he's talking about is something necessary. However, one thing I will say is that there's very little put forth, people that have chronic mental illness are people that should have been taken care of and figured into things to begin with, but there's very little for people that are not in that category. I've gone over to, you know, social service and asked to have a, you know, a caseworker, and they told me particularly, you either have to be developmentally challenged or under 18. You can't even get somebody on your case to work, you know, for you diligently and individually for your particular situation. So, I mean, it's obviously something that needs to be done. However, what I will say about this particular area is that there's a lot of higher-functioning people here, not necessarily as much Grass Valley, but from Highway 49 up and towards Grass Valley, you have mostly people that are alcoholics and not necessarily mentally ill. I've come up with some plans ill. I've come up with some plans for, one thing that is necessary, three things, actually. I've come up with some ideas for, for instance, a rehab facility, but that's lengthy to talk about. Two things that could be implemented are effective triaging, which they do in places like Las Vegas and LA. They have a series of like 40 questions that determine, you know, if you are in physical threat, if you have health threats, where you are to be placed with regard to the man-hours devoted to your case to get you into immediate housing. And you can get that from, I think Salvation Army in LA somewhere, or in Vegas, I know particularly. Another thing that I've thought about lately is giving people a debit card, like you get when you get out of jail, that their parents, relatives, friends could put money on and support them. Because a lot of people just go looking for homeless relatives. They come and ask me, have you seen, you know, Jim? Have you seen? And I don't know, you know, where these people are. But I think if they had that, people could support them on a regular basis. One thing I want to say, it's off topic, but it is a very grave mistake to put the Warming Shelter, again, in the hands of Sierra Roots. Because I've stayed at their shelters, and they're incredibly unprofessionally run. These are not people that have a background in social service, and you're risking our lives with it. And we do not, it's not a good thing at all. So I see that I'm out of time, but a few of these little things, it's a, you know, a multiple things in place are the things that really help. And just resources to help move your life forward is the best I can. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Chair, we do have one caller.
Bring the caller in, please.
Yes, Matthew Coulter. Important topic. I'm glad other people are speaking on it. And there's a few of us in town that have personal experience with homelessness that can relate to it in such a different way. And for years, including the Empty Bowl event, when we used to spend the night outside to actually feel what it's like to spend the night outside. And it's, a lot of people never do it, so they don't understand the ins and outs of it. The de facto safe parking space has become North Sutton Way. And I'm so desperate for a safe place for people to park that that's great, except for there's no bathrooms, and there's no trash cans, and there's no fresh water. So they have to go into Hospitality House or into any of the businesses there on Sutton Way to use the facilities. And it inevitably causes problems with the people hanging out there. Right behind CBS, I highly encourage any of you to go back there and see the folks living back there. I was in jail with one gentleman that lived back there in a hole in the side of the hill that he had dug. And he'd been there for a month and a half or so before he was arrested, spun out on drugs. There's been multiple fires back there. The fires did take place near the Navigation Center. One was before 8:00 a.m. It was early in the morning. And I believe one was later in the afternoon on the same day. And I think it was yesterday. I have to go back to my webpage, Concerned Citizen, and check it out, because I did post on them. Or actually, somebody else did, because I was in court for one of them. So one was definitely in the afternoon. Again, safe space. And I know we talked about it at one of the meetings in Truckee, and it seemed like it was a done deal in Truckee, that they were going to have some safe space for parking for people, which I thought it was odd in such a cold place that that would be the first place to facilitate something. I'm curious, has anything become of that? And another question I have that I've asked before, where can I get Nancy Baguette's wages, since they're getting money from the county? I understand they're a nonprofit, but is that available for the public to know what the higher echelon of the homeless advocates are making? Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Are there any other comments? Madam Clerk? Very good. I'll close the public comment portion. Any other comments from the board?
Just one follow-up in regard to the fire, fires. I track all the fires that happen, especially in the city limits. So there was a small fire on Dorsey, I believe, a few days ago. There was not fire, there's no current fires for the last few weeks, either on Bennett Street or at the Navigation Center. Oftentimes, when people see emergency medical there, every time you call an ambulance, you roll a fire truck. So there's an assumption that there's a fire. But oftentimes, it's a medical emergency, so that potentially could have been what the reference was. But I don't believe there's been fires in your, at the Navigation Center. If you're there, yeah.
Thank you, Supervisor. Sure, I thought, yes, as far as I know, I have not seen any fires at the Navigation Center.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Brendan. All right.
I have one question, though, just real quick. The Navigation Center has restrooms that are available, correct? Or there will be?
There will be.
There will be. So, I mean, it's just building to get that done. So eventually, that will, that's going to be another thing that's going to help alleviate some of that, that issue.
Supervisor Hook, yes, that's the intention.
Right. Thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
For the first, for the first one, which is the acceptance of the grant. Motion Supervisor Hall?
Second.
Second Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes. And entertain a motion for the contract with Hospitality House.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout?
Second.
Second Supervisor Hall. Madam Clerk?
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next agenda item, is everybody okay break-wise? Okay. All right, we have Rachel and David West, and this is the acceptance of the Veteran's Service Office presentation to the board.
Absolutely. Good morning, Chair Schofield and Supervisors. We are here today. We don't need, I really don't think that Sergeant West needs an introduction, but I am here to introduce him anyway, because I'm so proud of the work that he and his team do to support our veterans. And I think you will see why after you hear more from him. So to present to you the annual presentation of the Veteran's Services Office in Nevada County, here is Sergeant David West.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Chair Schofield. This is my fifth year in a row doing my annual presentation. Doesn't seem like it's been that long, but it has. This week, so this week is the third annual Military Appreciation Week that we hold here in Nevada County. This year, we're holding it from Saturday, November 4th through Sunday, November 11th. This started out three years ago as a way to help with the economic recovery of the post-COVID-19. We approached local businesses along with, along with strengthening our relationship with Beal Air Force Base. But we wanted to, we wanted to approach local businesses and see if they would offer discounts or promotional items to our veterans to help them come into their businesses during the week of Veterans Day. And what this week is, this week has really grown. This week, you're going to see we're also participating in Operation Green Light. We are lighting the Grass Valley Vets Hall, the Veteran's Services Office over at the, over at the Bright and Greens Facility. And I believe, starting tomorrow night, we're going to have the Roots Center green as well. We're highlighting the need of resources for veterans in rural communities. Also, we have our push-up challenge going on through the county right now. Paul Cummings from EOS challenged me to push up contest as another way to highlight the need for veterans' resources. So you're going to be seeing updates throughout the week on all the push-ups that are being done throughout the month to highlight what we're doing for veterans, to highlight the need for veterans. So, thank you. All right, our mission, our mission here at the Nevada County Veteran's Services Office is to advocate for the veterans of Nevada County. The veterans of Nevada County make up about 10% of the population, a little more when you consider their surviving spouses and dependents. We're mostly known for assisting veterans filing their claims for compensation. Compensation is, is a monetary benefit that comes for the, for injuries resulting from their service, either knee injuries, mental health illness, or other diseases. We're also able to help our low-income, older veterans who served during a time of war, staying, stay in their home through the pension program. These programs are also able to serve some surviving spouses. And our goal is to connect every veteran in Nevada County with his or her benefits that they earned through their service. A little bit about your Veteran's Services Office. We operate on a budget of just over $640,000. And that is to fully staff our office with three full-time employees and one part-time, one part-time office assistant. Right now, we have an open, we have an open space. One of our employees was recruited by CalVet, and she decided to go work at CalVet. So we have an open opportunity. The veterans in, the veterans in Nevada County receive over $45 million benefits annually. And this year, we, so far, we have generated $6.6 million in benefits to the veterans in Nevada County. We have been awarded $49,000 annually for the past two years to provide mental health services to, to the veterans in Nevada County through the CalVet Prop 63 Grant. And Tracy Hart is our underserved veterans population outreach coordinator, who has helped reduce our count of veterans homelessness. I believe we have six on our by-name list right now. We've housed over 50 veterans since we've announced our intent to reduce veterans homelessness to zero. And we're doing really well in that regard. So we do, we are going to have some anticipated delays in 2023. Last year, the largest piece of legislation to impact the veterans, the veterans in the nation was passed, has been called, what has been known as what's called the PACT Act, or the Sergeant First Class Heath Robinson Honoring Our Promises to Address Comprehensive Toxicity Act of 2022. What this did is it opened up, it really opened up the floodgates for veterans to get benefits that they were earned as a result of their exposure to the burn pits or some new conditions that were added due to the Asian orange, exposure to Asian orange for our Vietnam veterans. This is causing influx of claims both on the national level and in our office. With this influx of claims, the VA has tried to hire more veterans, more people to process these claims. They're doing a big push. However, with that big push has come a lot of errors, a lot of timeliness decisions not being made, a big backlog. And whether anybody knows it or not, the Nevada County Veteran's Services Office is kind of synonymous with the VA. And so when the VA makes mistakes, we make mistakes. We try to correct those. We hold accountable. We do that. But we're, we're trying to help our veterans. So that is going to be a delay. And next week, as we, as our federal congressmen and senators work together to pass a federal budget, our office is going to be inundated with phone calls, with veterans worried how it's going to affect their payment, their health care, and things of that nature. So focus, so we spent the past year focused on highlighting the needs of Nevada County. Like I said earlier, we've reduced our veterans homelessness. We're down to six veterans on our by-name list since I've developed this slide. We've really made an impact of reducing that. We've become a, we've become a model in Northern California for how to reduce veterans homelessness amongst other counties, and when I, when I travel and tell them our success stories. In October, I got an opportunity to present at the California Welfare Directors Fall Conference. And then I presented on the integration and innovation of how we provide our services. In Nevada County, we don't, in the Nevada County Veteran's Services Office, we just don't focus on the benefits that our veterans are entitled to on the federal level. If they're unable to veterans' benefits, we're initiating that contact, we're initiating the process for them to get their state benefits. We really are trying to be the true veterans advocate and focus on everything that they're entitled to, and build better relationships within DSS to the benefit of our veterans and their programs. In June 2023, I was nominated and voted in for an elected leadership position by my peers at the National Association of County Veteran's Services Officers as an E-Board position. Thank you. As an E-Board position, and the benefit is, is that on the national level, they're getting to hear a story other than LA, San Diego, and San Francisco. They're getting to understand that there are small rural counties in California that need, they need, they need assistance as well, reaching our veterans. Our veterans' outreach and wellness, or our VOW, this goes with our Prop 40, Prop 63 Grant, our $49,000. We have a, we have a new relationship with Sierra Family Therapy Centers. We're trying to diversify how we engage our veterans when it comes to mental health. So right now, on two, on Thursdays, if you come in between 1:00 and 3:00, you're going to be having an opportunity to hang out with a therapy dog. It's already, it's already stressful enough to get services from the Veteran's Services Office. A lot of veterans have that warrior mentality. So if we can break down that barrier and let them hang out with a little dog, to make them a little happier before they come in and talk to us, that's great. We also have our Guitars for Vets program. After 10 lessons, 10 free lessons out of our facility, they get shipped a free guitar. We have a lot of other programs where it's just not focusing on helping them get their mental health treatment and talk about their feelings. We also want to give them outlets to, to be more productive in the community. And recently, we were invited by LA County Veteran's Services Officer to participate in a study of the benefits of connecting veterans to their benefits and their family. The study's going to be taking place by USC. It's going to be a very instrumental study. And we've been asked to participate as a way to bring validity to the study and help bring resources to the veterans in California. And last, we're really, really trying to make more of an impact on eastern, eastern Nevada County. We are committed, we have stayed committed to providing our outreach services on the first and third Friday of every month. And recently, we worked with IAS to develop a new email system, veteransoftruckie@nevada county.ca.gov. We're giving this out to our service providers and other influential people in Truckee. So if they have a veteran come in in their facility, they can just email us at that. And within the VSO, it's flagged red, and everybody knows that that's a, that's an issue that we need to address. That's an email that we need to coordinate and take care of. So we're really trying to give pointed services to the veterans that need it most and try and find them where they're at. So thank you. With that, I'm ready for any questions.
Thank you, David. This is your fifth year?
Yes, sir.
You've come a long ways with public presentations. Very good.
Thank you.
I don't think there's any veterans on the dais here. But Sue, I believe you have an honorary title, so I think I'll let you start this.
Well, I wouldn't say that, but I would just say that, seriously, David, in the last five years where we've come, is outstanding. You and your team and the outreach that you're doing, it just brings tears to my eyes almost. I mean, it's amazing. So your passion and love for what you're doing, and how you guys engage with our community, is fabulous. I mean, you know, we're going to have ups and downs with homelessness. There's huge, I mean, behavioral health, we all know that. We just, we're looking at that all the way around. But how you reach out to them individually like that is, is important. And I'd love to see you in that position at the state and national level where you're participating. It's huge. Because rural is really such an important, it's not like being in LA or Orange or any of those big communities. This is a small community that has 10% of our population is military retired, Blue Star families. And you reach out to all those. So I just can't thank you enough for where you've come in the last five years and what you've accomplished. It's another thing about Nevada County, we're innovative. We're always looking at ways to make things better for the people that live here. You know, we're going to hear complaints about stuff all over. We get that. We can't fix everything all at once. But you're doing them one at a time, and it's incredible work. So thank you. I really, 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 from the bottom of my heart, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
David, it was, it was so good to hear from you. Excellent presentation, and congrats on your appointment. That's something to be proud of. I just, I have only good things to say about the work you've done. And you've been in, you know, our East County Veteran Population. You and I have been to meetings there. And I, when I first got into office, I heard a lot from that community about the Veterans Hall and all the shared resources that they believe they were entitled to. And you took, you wrapped arms around all that and solved that problem and got representation for that group of people. So thank you so much. It takes a lot of work to do what you do, and a lot of, probably a lot of psychic and spiritual energy that you put out trying to help somebody every day. And I spiritual energy that you put out trying to help somebody every day, and I recognize that, and I just thank you so much. I feel like we have the best person possible for this role is you, and you're on this job. So this is one area of the county I do not worry about, so thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Heidi?
I could ditto everything that's been said already, too. Big, huge congratulations on your leadership role at the national level. You're exactly right, bringing that rural voice to the big cities who are dominating a lot of the conversations is really important, and you're outspoken, and you know your programs, and you're going to be a great asset to all of the rural parts of California. So congratulations on that. And on all your innovation and outreach, and the way you've made this office just really someplace that everybody knows. I think the vets in this area know where to go to get help, and, and you're going to continue to reach out to them, but you're doing a phenomenal job, and I agree, and I'm very, very pleased and appreciate the presentation, and keep up the good work.
Lisa?
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. So one of the things that, when you're new up here and you get, getting to know people and processes, and the one thing that I really appreciate is I know if I refer somebody to you or your office, that they're going to get taken care of. And that is very reassuring, sitting in my position, because obviously, I don't do what you do. But the commitment, especially to our homeless veterans population, is really important to me. I just appreciate all the work that you're doing, and I look forward to this week being Veterans Appreciation Week, and then also next year, our Armed Services Day that I believe we're going to be doing in May. I know you're really instrumental in putting that event on, so thanks for all the hard work that you do, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, thank you very much, ma'am.
I just had one more thing. I just, I don't want to go miss of not thanking our community, what's going on here. This is huge, and I don't, I just, I was so enthralled in what we were talking about. But this week is a great celebration and recognition of our veterans. And I just want to thank all those businesses and let them know it's not too late to sign up. You know, you can go on the website, and you get to have that great little sticker in your window, and it's a lot, there's a lot going on. This is the most giving community I've ever been to. The philanthropy that goes on here, the folks that donate, I mean, you know, sometimes you wonder, how can you ask for one more thing, right? But they're stepping up and doing that. So I do want to thank you, and I want to thank the outreach your team has done with that, with our businesses. I have some, I even have one in North San Juan. And so I, I just think that's another huge thing that just shows, and the signs that went up, we didn't talk about those today, but the Caltrans signs are up, and that's very exciting. So when you come in, it says Nevada County cares about our veterans, right? So good job on that, because you really helped push that through, too. So I just, those are my last two things, and thank you, Ed.
And the telling part of it is, the veterans that I know, the ones, if you can get them to come in to see you, I know that in itself is a bit of a challenge, think very highly of you and your team. And they can be a very verbal group of people, so David, you're doing an excellent job out there, greatly appreciated. Well, Dan was a veteran, so he had to put up with him, right? I do plan on attending tomorrow, so that ceremony is always kind of special, too.
Thank you, and I, I just want to say my, our office is always successful with the leadership, leadership and support we get from Rachel, Director of Social Services, Board Supervisor in the CEO's office. So thank you very much for all the support you give throughout here.
Thank you, David. Or any public comment on this item? We do, come on down.
May I, Mr. Ron Trouble?
Is that Mr. Ron Trouble? Hello, Ron.
I hope there's other veterans here also. Is this Tracy? Here? No, you're not. Okay, you're, yeah, what's, what is your name? Thank you. There was the, oh, thank you very much, all of you. Yes, I know Ed very well, I've been in Lake of the Pines for 31 years, I've had to work with him, and he's a nuisance, but...
We can only get that monument taken care of.
A nice nuisance.
Thank you, Ron.
I'm a veteran, and yes, I've just, about six months ago, through Tracy, I got compensation. And I happened to be part of the atomic testing in the Bikini Islands during my early time, like 1954, 55, 56, when I got to see a bomb go off 20 miles away and come back to the Atoll and see the fish that took place. We chose not to eat those because they were a little radioactive and that, and I had to throw shoes away because they were radioactive, and then I had a problem with my body, and whether it was caused by cancer of, created by the atomic bomb, or God almighty did it, I don't know, but I did get a compensation, and I appreciate that immensely. So have you been looking after the veterans? From the ones I know, we have a group in Lake of the Pines called the MBS, and if you remember that, then you happen to know that's military bullshit. And, and it's, and it's real. Thank you. Thank you, Ed. And thank you.
Ron, thank you for your comments, and thank you for your service. Are you familiar with that group in Lake of the Pines, David?
Yes, I've heard of it.
Very good. Madam Clerk, are there any callers?
There are no callers or written comment.
Very good. Oh, Diana.
Diana Gamson, Executive Director of the Nevada County Cannabis Alliance. And within our organization, we have a program called the Compassion Program, where licensed cannabis farmers donate product from their farm, cannabis flour, and we work with our licensed manufacturers in Nevada City to turn that flour into oil. And we're really excited to offer that to, and then it gets all dispensed through Elevation, our local dispensary in Nevada City, and we're really excited to offer that for free to all veterans. It's, we have a high CBD oil and some others, and so someone at Elevation should have been in touch with you about that. But we're really excited to participate in that way. And this actually is a year-round program where we offer veterans discounts from local cannabis products.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Diana. All right. Seeing no other public comment, I will close the public comment portion. And with no other comments, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hook?
Second.
Second Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
District four.
District four, yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes. Thank you. And now, Mr. Gold, I know has been waiting patiently. This is a resolution approving the Nevada County Community Corrections Partnership Plan. Mr. Jeff Goldman.
Good morning, Chair Schofield, still morning, and members of the board. And so this is the presentation for the Community Corrections Partnership. We have an annual plan that we have to submit to the state, and this is a part of that process to submit that plan. And just to talk about, talk about some of the things that we've been doing lately with the Community Corrections Partnership. All right, so a brief history about CCPs or Community Correction Partnerships. So it actually started with Senate Bill 678 in 2009, and so the purpose of that bill was to reduce prison overcrowding and to save the state some money. And they came up with the funding formula to try to encourage counties, or in particular probation departments, to use evidence-based supervision practices to accomplish those goals. However, at least from my understanding and my experience, is that not many counties really set up the partnerships at that time, and that was not really until 2011, when Governor Brown signed into law AB 109, our criminal justice realignment, and AB 117, the cleanup bill for that. And that made fundamental changes to the correction system to stop what they felt was a revolving door of low-level offenders and parole, or parole violators coming through the state prison system. And I think that's, in Nevada County, that's kind of when the CCP formation occurred, and the initial CCP plan was back in 2011. And as a result of AB 109, within the first six months of realignment, over 38,000 individuals who would have been supervised by the state in state prisons or on parole were then being supervised by probation departments and housed in local jails. This was a big shift in process and policy, that all those folks who would normally go to state prison were now in local jail and/or on parole, or now with probation, for the most part. There were still a handful of parolees, and there still are in the county today. And to respond to this, that's when the CCPs got more active and tried to create plans to address this big shift in populations from the state to the local communities. And so the local CCP Executive Committee is made up of myself, the Chief Probation Officer as the Chair, the Courts, Health and Human Services, the Public Defender, the District Attorney, the Sheriff, and the Chief of Police from Grass Valley that represents all the different police departments, Truckee as well as Nevada City. And just a little bit of definition, or definitions around what that means, or what realignment kind of means locally. So there's two different populations. One is referred to as PRCS, or Post-Release Community Supervision. And so those are offenders who were previously, would have been sentenced to prison, but now are being housed locally, and those are offenses that they refer to as non-non-nons, as their controlling offense or their main offense. And so non-non-non means non-serious, non-violent, and non-sexual offense, and those are defined by statute. So sometimes you'll hear like, how is that a non-serious or a non-violent offense? Those are defined by statute, not by just the, the, I guess, the shock value of the offense, but they're outlined statute by statute of which offenses those are. And mandatory supervision, so those are the folks that would have gone to prison but are serving time locally in the jail, and then those individuals can get what's called a split sentence, where they do part of their time in jail and part of their time supervised by probation. And I would say, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, that I would say pretty much all of our sentences are split sentences. They can give them just a sentence where they spend all their time in jail, and they don't get that supervision piece. But here locally, I would say that almost all of our sentences do get that split, so they get that reentry kind of time and that supervision piece on the backend. All right, so this is kind of a look, it says AB 109 population, but this is the adult supervision population in the county by risk, and this doesn't include, these are folks that have been sentenced, so this doesn't include our pre-trial population of about 120 people, our incompetent-to-stay-in-trial people, or work project, or juveniles, or anything like that. These are folks that have been sentenced, sentenced and either to time on supervision or time in jail and supervision, or a combination thereof. So if you look on the left, that's divided up by risk level, and that's another term that's a little tricky, because risk level does not mean, you know, if it's high risk, doesn't mean they committed a crime, like, you know, if you were to think of the highest level murder, it's the risk to reoffend. So high risk could be someone that committed what someone would think of a lower-level offense, but just have cycled through the system frequently. And if you look, it used to trend years ago to where you'd have more low-level offenders, but I think due to numerous statutory changes over the last decade with some reform regarding some drug laws and other things, that the low-risk section is kind of shrinking, and the higher and moderate level folks are showing up a lot more. By supervision type, if you look, the majority of people are on standard probation, and then you have a little sliver here of mandatory supervision and post-release community supervision, and it's primarily males that are under supervision locally. The number of AB 109 offenders in Wayne Brown Correctional Facility, and this varies, right now it's about 22, and that can be, I mean, it varies from the teens to the mid 20s. That also includes, besides our local folks, that also includes parole revocations. So generally, it's about five or six folks in there from parole revocations, and those are the folks we don't really have a lot of control over, because the state still handles those individually, our individuals, but we house them locally, and they count in that population of realigned offenders. All right, the definition of recidivism for the state, so recidivism is defined as a conviction of a new felony or misdemeanor committed within three years of release from custody or placement on supervision. So that's the state definition, and some of the things we're working on, and I'll talk about here in just a second, is, yes, we have to provide that state definition of what recidivism is, but we're trying to track other metrics as well that impact our system. So these are convictions. So a lot of offenses or events will be handled informally, whether that's the district attorney doesn't file on it, and we handle it with a different kind of approach, whether that's some sort of sanction by the probation department, or that's what we call, or a flash incarceration, which is, instead of going through the court process, they can stay in jail up to 10 days without going through the court process based on a violation, and sometimes a new law violation will be handled that way, just because it's been shown more effective, the celerity or the swiftness in which we handle things, to have more of an impact. And that's something that when someone goes through that process, they actually file or sign a waiver that they are not going to go through the court process and through the whole violation process, but it wouldn't be counted here in this state definition of recidivism. So we're trying to capture those things so that we can kind of get a better idea of the impact, whether it be arrests, flash incarcerations, or other impacts that individuals that are under supervision have on the system as a whole. All right, so this here is just, these are the recidivism rates by year. We did it by individual, and if you look, the numbers are incorrect, so ignore these numbers on the top, but the bar graph on the left is correct. And so if you look, it's very few individuals that are actually convicted of a new offense. I think the highest year is eight on the PRCS folks, and these are folks that have come out of state prison and historically have been returned to prison at pretty high rates. And why we put it as a number instead of a percentage here is because sometimes when the denominator is so low, even if you have a handful, it looks like, you know, the percentage is 80 or 90% or something like that. So, but the impact on the system is still fairly low, and if you look at, we did do it as a percentage for this cohort of folks from 2015 to 2020, and so under mandatory supervision, 20%, post-release community supervision, 16%, so that's an extremely low percentage. And then kind of going back to SB 678, that formula initially was devised as, they created baselines of how many people you had sent to prison from probation, people that had been on probation and eventually went to prison due to violations. And by reducing that is how you got the funding from the state, and we've always been at the highest tier of funding, I think, pretty much every year. And that now, because of these shifts in populations, they're looking at the state level of how they're going to change that funding formula. It's been locked in for the last three years, but that's just to say that we have a really low recidivism rate. I think sometimes we're lowest in the state, sometimes Sierra County gets close because they don't really have many folks on there, but we historically have had a low rate of recidivism relative to the metrics that the state issues. All right, so what we ended up doing with the, in the CCP was a strategic planning session that was facilitated by a technical assistance provider. And why we ended up doing it was because, you know, it had been almost 10 years when we first decided to do this. The first years, there were a lot of unknowns. I mean, folks that were around when AB 109 was put into law, there's a lot of fear that the prison doors would be opening, and there'd be people running down the streets unsupervised. So when we initially planned back in 2011, that was a whole different environment, so we wanted to kind of update what we were going to do. We had new executive members, we had learned some lessons over the last decade, we wanted to increase our fiscal responsibility, become more data-driven, increase our collaboration, and just kind of a time to relook at that approach. And some other things that we had were, we also saw the state came out with an audit, there's some other, and I think we were kind of, I don't know, we were kind of psychic in this, that, you know, the state just this year passed AB 1080. in this, that, you know, the state just this year passed AB 1080, which is a statutorily mandated audit that looks at sentencing practices, funding processes, jail impact, probation purposes or processes, and recidivism across the state, or at least 15, a sample of 15 counties. And we kind of got ahead of that by, with the strategic planning of kind of changing the way that we look at things. And a part of that was our funding process and looking at how, what programs we fund. And then when you, or when a department or an individual approaches us to fund something of having a format of what's the program, what's the outcomes, and then the next year following up with what outcomes did you achieve, what population did you serve, and those sorts of things, to make sure that we're kind of meeting the spirit and intent of the law and to make sure that we're not hanging on to programs that were ineffective. And one part of that is, that I'll add here, is we also came up with, we had missed, I think back in 2016, there was innovation kind of piece to it, and you're supposed to spend funds on innovative projects. So we decided to create kind of a group, and the executive committee will fund these, essentially put out to CBOs or community-based organizations, the opportunity to get some of the AB 109 funding relative to innovative programs or practices that they're engaged in to support this population. So that will be coming out soon. We just finished the process as far as what the documentation and all that kind of stuff looks like when a CBO will want to apply for some of this money. And another part of this is creating bylaws and other things, just kind of some of the logistics around the CCP to kind of shore up some of the administrative pieces of the CCP as well. All right. And so with that, we created a new mission. The mission of the Nevada County Community Corrections Partnership is to collaboratively ensure a safe Nevada county by reducing and preventing crime through evidence-based, cost-effective policies and programs. We also created some guiding principles, a review of the result. So we also did stakeholder interviews. Part of the TA or the technical assistance process was to have stakeholder interviews and then included a community survey, surveys of many county departments, community-based organizations. And so, based on those survey results and interviews, we created these guiding principles. So, we believe in creativity and innovation, collaboration, mutual commitment to the group to improve the system in a fiscally responsible manner, being open, honest, sharing ideas, and being respectful, and continuously letting purpose drive strategy. And also some goals came out of that. The goals of the CCP are, we will be data-driven in decision-making and evaluating outcomes, improving community engagement and participation in the CCP, ensure safe Nevada county by reducing and preventing crime, and improve overall quality of life in Nevada county. And so, some of these, we've already started. We have a data subcommittee, and that committee is bringing up, trying to create a dashboard relative to things that the executive committee wants to see and that the public would want to see. And we're starting out with the programs that we're already funding and some outcomes relative to that, some things relative to the state audit that's coming up, so that we can kind of get ahead of those things and shift anything that we need to based on some of that information that we gather. And another piece of that, we're also doing, we've done a bunch of different community engagement pieces, and we're still working on some more as far as just going to service groups and different opportunities that we have, whether it be in CCLI or other opportunities that we have to talk about the CCP and get more engagement and provide more information about it. And why are we here? Based on the community survey, the community of Nevada county is not aware of or knowledgeable about the CCP and its role in the system. So like I said, we're trying to develop an education outreach program for community members that could increase the support and participation in the CCP. And I mean, there's a lot of things out there. I know that we just got the list of commissions that need members and other things. So, we're just trying to put it out there that if people are interested in this, because a lot of people are interested in the criminal justice process and how it affects the community, that we would appreciate the participation. So we have some other ideas of maybe having some workshops or listening sessions around different towns and areas in the county to inform folks of what we're doing. And it's a great opportunity because it's one of the few meetings that we have that it's, you know, the, myself, the sheriff, chief of police, the DA, the public defender, everyone's there. And we have an opportunity to, besides beyond the realignment population, to solve some other problems and issues, or come up with some creative solutions to things that are going on within the system as a whole. I mean, the courts are there as well. So it's a great opportunity for that and to get feedback from the public. And we think the innovation fund piece will also provide an opportunity for people to get involved. And just a couple more. The programs that we currently fund is, we have a DSS eligibility worker for clients, custody cost at the sheriff's office relative to the realigned population, half-time attorney for collaborative courts at the DA's office and the public defender's office, and a full-time personal service coordinator at the public defender's office, a therapist that's usually housed in our office for these clients as well as at the jail, and a GVPD officer embedded on the adult drug court team, and probation case management, treatment services, and incentives for clients. And how that breaks down in costs, this last year, the total is 3.3 million, 1.6 going to the sheriff's office, 349 to health and human services, these are for the two attorneys, a small amount going to Grass Valley PD, 207 for treatment, and then 819 going to the probation department. And the question I frequently get is, why is the treatment dollar so low? And so that used to be a lot higher prior to some Medi-Cal changes, and drug Medi-Cal and certain things like that. And so, now, there's just not a need that, I mean, we can leverage other dollars, so we don't need that fund to be so high. But, you know, if there's, like I said, with the innovation funds and some of the other things that we do, if there are some plans that fall outside of, you know, what Medi-Cal can pay for relative to treatment, and like, and some of those probation funds fall in for incentives and some other treatment items, but we're open to those ideas and input. All right. And so if folks want to participate, they can sign up for CCP alerts. Our next meeting is January 25th at the probation department at 109 North Pine. And it's a public meeting, so the public is welcome to attend if that's something of interest to them. That's all I got. So any questions, concerns?
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Arnie, I think you've been involved with this. I'll let you start.
Ed and I, kind of.
The two of us have attended.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I was familiar with, with everything in here. And I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. I was really looking forward to it, so I'm looking forward to catching up with you and learning what transpired there. It is a cool process to sit in that room and hear from all the different stakeholders. That's what I took away from the meetings I've been in. It's a comprehensive plan, and it gets to the heart of what I think we're trying to do, which is keep our community safe and give people an alternative to being incarcerated, get some of our program services wrapped around people that need it, probably having offenses that really could be prevented with the program that you are operating. I really don't have any questions. I appreciate coming in front of us and letting us see everything you're doing. And as usual, if there's additional legislative support or funding that you need from us to help you do your job better, please let us know. Thank you.
I would say just as the 678 funding discussion comes up at the state level, that's where we're looking at. I mean, that's a big chunk of our adult probation funding.
One quick question, the youth side of it is, like, two pieces. One, you and I have talked about the importance of analyzing the data that you've had historically. So I was, it was really refreshing to see how your program makes decisions based on the data that you've collected and analyzed. But the other piece is more a question, but the youth component was not included in the metrics we saw here. It's completely separate.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Arnie?
Thank you. This looks like a good program. Looks like it's another place that Nevada county is in leadership, so that's great. Good job on that. I'm a little bit fascinated with the recidivism numbers. And is it accurate, I may be misreading this, but is it accurate to say that we have lower recidivism rates in the, at the counties after realignment than the state does?
Correct by far. And so we, sometimes there's a shift. So what we did recently, the state does it in two-year cohorts for probation, because now probation terms are generally two years. So they don't fall into that until they fall off of probation and then go out three years to see if they've actually committed an offense. So we've tried to align our metrics the same as the state. And the last one, you know, they're a little bit behind because of how the cohorts fall, but the last one I think was in the mid-40s for the state. And usually we're below, 20 or below, so less than a half.
Does that attest to the success of realignment, of having the counties work with these incarcerated folks rather than the state, would you say?
Yes. And I think, I mean, we pretty much have everyone. I think we're down to 25 parolees in Nevada county that the state is supervising. But I think a big part of it is, they've been closing down a lot of parole offices. So I think our parole agent that's located in Auburn covers five counties. So they don't know the services that are available. They don't know, you know, different things about the community when our staff, you know, live, work, and know what's going on in the community. So I think that's a big piece of it.
That makes sense. That's, that's, that's great. Congratulations on all this good work.
Thank you.
Sue?
Thanks for the update. This is always interesting. I'm not sure how sold I am on all of it. I do love what you're doing, but then I, people don't get punished for the things they're doing. So I struggle with this a little bit. But I think what you're doing is, I mean, I think it is good when you look at what's going through here and what happens at the state level is very different. So I commend Nevada county again for being innovative in how you make this work. But in the big picture, I still struggle with it, what happens to our state and how we manage it. So maybe we'll have to sit down and have another good conversation like we've had before in the past offline, because I just keep watching things and it just seems out of control. When you look out of our county, and how do we keep our county protected, when you see the outside not being quite as successful as we are? So, continue to do such great work that you do. Appreciate it. You have a great team over there.
Thank you. And accountability, I mean, accountability is still a piece of it. We've just tried to rethink that it's a less kind of binary, you know, you're either out or in, and that there's a spectrum of things that we can do to hold people accountable. So, we've tried to still have that at the forefront of it, when someone commits some sort of public harm, that there's still accountability attached to it. It just might look different than it has historically, so.
Lisa?
Really don't have any comments other than thank you for the presentation. It's good to understand how these things work, especially the budgeting part, to see, you know, who gets what and what you guys do with the money. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Jeff, I kind of agree with Sue. I can remember Michael coming to us, and my comment at the time was, well, we're just going to have to see how this works. And I know you have nothing to do with the court system and how folks are brought into the system, and I think you guys are doing an incredible job here. But statewide, man, they've got to be rethinking some of these programs that they've put together. And some of these programs that we've even voted for based upon some of the wonderful language they put into it. But I think that your level and what you're doing here has been exceptional. So you and your teams are greatly appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. And I would encourage you all, when we have a, we have graduations for the PRCS folks and stuff like that. And the way that they talk about the POs that actually do the work, because I'm not the one, you know, meeting with clients or doing the work, and the way that they talk about it, having been on probation in half the counties in the state or parole, and back in, in and out of prison, and how they talk about the staff here, is kind of amazing, reflection of the work that they do. And I mean, we've had people break down in tears that have been in prison multiple years regarding the care and support that they feel that they get from the staff, as well as the accountability piece too, so.
Thank you for that comment. Yeah, it's appreciated. All right. Is there any public comment on this? Madam Clerk?
Chair, we do have one caller.
Bring the caller in, please.
Okay.
Hello, Board Supervisors, Matthew Coulter. And my most recent stint in the jail was three months, and I'm curious about any programs up and coming for non-English speakers, maybe even non-residents of the United States that are visiting, that have been picked up. And they seem to throw the whole place into disarray, basically. And because the staff doesn't speak Spanish, there's just a big gap and a lot of abuse going on. I'd like to hear anything about that possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. I don't know that you have much to do with the jails, so.
No, I mean, on our staff, we, I think, we either have two or three certified Spanish interpreters, so, I mean, one up in Truckee and one, at least one down here as well, so.
Yeah.
We have our bases covered for that.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other public comment? All right. CNN, I will close the public comment portion. If there's further comments, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hall?
Second.
Second Supervisor Hook. Madam Clerk?
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for your patience. All right, Board, I'm going to bring this to you. Our next agenda item is our announcements. We did have item number 34 canceled, which gives us a little more time in the afternoon. Would you like to wait until the afternoon session?
Yes.
Are we okay with that?
Okay.
All right. Then what we will do, we will be going into closed session. And we will close, we will come out a closed session following lunch, or, help me, Kit.
Yes, I think that's the plan, that we would come out a closed session and announce out after lunch.
Okay. And Diana, for your, the cannabis issue, would probably be the first thing that'll come up, and then we'll do announcements as a final part. Okay? All right. Madam, or, Madam Counsel, would you read us into closed, please?
Yes, we will be meeting in a closed session pursuant to the agenda relating the existing litigation case of Andreessen versus Minnis et al.
Very good. Thank you.
And are you asking for any public comment?
Of course I am. Is there any public comment on this closed session issue? There was a letter?
Chair Schofield?
Oh, yes, there was a letter.
We did receive a letter that the full board received, and it went into the public record as well.
We did receive that, yes. No calls?
Not that I'm aware of.
Very good. Then we will go into closed session. Then we will go into closed session.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire, because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home, so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries, to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That could be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. I picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching the fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how, if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster. So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance, to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved lives. Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate. We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you, where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful, because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street, so please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire, because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house. But then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening. And I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor, who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place. A destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate. We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents, to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, "This is how you have to protect your home." That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house. But then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power. that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire. If there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place. You know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents, to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire. You know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching the fire come down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening and I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public.
We'll reconvene the regular meeting of the Nevada County Supervisors, November 7th, 2023. Madam Counsel, would you read us out of closed?
Yes, certainly, Chair. With regard to the closed session, direction was given to staff.
Thank you. All right, we've had item number 34 canceled, continued. So we will move right into item number 35. This is a resolution accepting the award of California Department of Cannabis Control Local Jurisdiction Retail Access Grant in the amount of $275,000. Matt Kelly, would you like to take that?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. Matt Kelly, Director of Code and Cannabis Compliance. Also with me is Kimberly Parker, or Kimberly Parker with our Economic Development Office, and Brian Foss is our Planning Director with our Planning Department. So the item before you this afternoon is a resolution to accept the Department of Cannabis Control Local Jurisdiction Retail Access Grant. This is from Department of Cannabis Control, or DCC. At your regular meeting of April 18th, 2023, the board authorized an application for the retail sales access grant. The amount was $320,511 that was applied for. DCC awarded the county $275,000, of which $200,000 would be for the grant itself, which would be used for proposed ordinance updates that would be will be coming before the board at a later date, including potential retail sales. Also, with that is also an equity component. The equity component of the grant is $75,000. This would allow for potential future applicants to be able to gain financial assurance from the county or the state when helping with their applications, compliance training, or financial assurance for county permit applications. Additionally, funding would also support cannabis, our Cannabis Local Equity Program, which the board graciously approved at your meeting in August. So we do have that program now. We're working with Sierra Business Council, or SBC, to implement that program. And if this grant is accepted today, we would then be able to continue that if we have an ordinance that would allow for retail sales. We are looking at bringing that ordinance updates before the board this next spring or in summer. It would include potential retail sales of permitted cannabis. The ordinance also would include potential restricting of locations of potential cannabis farms if the board chose to include that, as well as a mobile retail sales as well, or delivery, and then potentially a farmer's market-type model as well would be included in the proposed ordinance as was directed by the board at your last workshop. So included with the, and was asked to include a presentation a little bit on our equity program. So these next couple of slides sort of outline the two grants that we do have now. So the first grant that we also have is, it's also from DCC. It's our Local Jurisdiction Assistance Grant, and this was awarded at $1.2 million. The grant award allows for assistance in preparation of environmental documents for compliance with CEQA. This was done as part of our last ordinance update that was recently approved. Includes also potential, the applications allow for, by our cannabis growers, to be able to be able to apply for the equity program, be able to, and work with, sorry. The retail, or, sorry, let me stop for a second. We've started, or we've implemented a contract with the Sierra Business Council, and they are helping us to administer our equity program. This grant allows us to be able to contract with them for creating of applications and a program to begin in the next coming months. I'll also talk about our GoBiz grant here in just a minute that we also have that also is part of our equity program. The equity program portion of this grant was $775,600 that will be available for applicants to apply for. It assists with provisional licenses to assist in meeting of annual license requirements. Allows consultants to be able to assess environmental impacts in working with our permitted cannabis growers. Additionally, it allows for SBC or additional consulting firms with our equity program applicants to be able to assist with local license requirements. This could be including part of our inspections of our annual cannabis program, which is a yearly process where we go out and inspect our applicants twice a year. So this additional equity program would be able to pay for some of that funding by our applicants to be able to also purchase additional things like hoop houses, change from light deprivation to greenhouses or those types of things. It's a really good program. Looking forward to rolling it out in the next couple of months. And we'll be bringing that to the board, we'll be bringing that or announcing that here in the next couple of months, announcing that to the board as well. We'll be accepting applications for that program. The other component of our equity program is our, the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, or GoBiz. This was the other grant that we received that the board graciously allowed us to accept. This amount was $755,895.55. This funding, similar to our DCC grant, allows for applicants to enter into our program or apply into our program for future equity-type processes. They're able to gain entry into, if one of the applicant options would be to actually gain entry into our program. If we have a property owner whose parcel is vacant and they'd like to enter into our program and be a licensed cannabis grower, this grant, along with our DCC grant, would allow that. It would be able to allow some funding for them to be able to help pay for permit costs, pay for potential grading permit costs or building permit costs, licensed professionals to be able to do engineering, things of that nature. It's a really exciting program that we have, and so these two grants would help to administer that. It also would allow for, if we have existing smaller-scale legacy cannabis cultivation farmers, to be able to overcome some permitting barriers and things due to costs that they would have to be able to apply for that for our program. And additionally, it allows for some startup costs to be paid. Getting into the permitted cannabis market can be quite expensive for smaller growers or for just growers in general. So this would allow for them to be able to use that, use funding for that. And then no more than 10% of, for GoBiz, no more than 10% of the grant awards can be used for grant administration. Grant administration is about $32,000, and that's for the county to be able to administer the grant. So with that, the recommendation before you is to accept or to adopt the attached resolution approving acceptance of our California Department of Cannabis Control Local Jurisdiction Retail Access Grant in the amount of $275,000. With that, that concludes my staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate the update there. And with the grant of $275,000, and a big part of it creating a new ordinance or an ordinance that includes the retail portion and some other changes. Lisa and I are on that ad hoc committee. We have met recently with Matt and Brian. And Lisa, I'm going to turn it over to you for comments first.
Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you. Actually, I have a question on the equity grants. And I know that all occurred before I was seated up here. What's the eligibility requirements to apply for the equity grants? What, is there some sort of state criteria that says who is eligible for those equity dollars?
There is. It's predominantly the applicant has to be, have to be a Nevada County resident or work in a permitted cannabis grow or cannabis farm within Nevada County. It can be for starting a new farm or adding to an existing farm. There are a number of other state requirements that are built into both grants. SBC or the Sierra Business Council is helping us to develop the applications that would outline that and outline the program. Also, there'll be a workshop that we'll be doing when we announce the applications that will help growers get into that as well. But being a Nevada County resident or being a part of Nevada County business is part of it. And then also being, it allows for, so if you've been a, when cannabis was illegal, if you've been arrested or otherwise impacted by the war on drugs, if you will, that's one of the criteria as well. So being able to apply for our program, being able to meet those requirements.
So basically, anybody who's in the cannabis business, if they live in Nevada County, they're eligible for the equity grants?
They would be, yes.
They would be. Okay, so there's no special, it's just the word equity kind of throws me off a little bit because when I see that, I'm thinking that the equity comes in minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses. I know the issue of previously convicted drug crimes that, with cannabis that were, you know, considered illegal at the time is one of them. So there is, other than, there is none of that in the requirements?
There are some, but I mean, there's not, it's, there's not, I mean, it's really open to everybody. I mean, it does say equity, but it's designed to get really anybody into the permitted or legal cannabis market. There's not, I mean, there are other provisions that would be, you know, for, you're exactly right, for minority-owned businesses or women-owned businesses and those types of things. But there are, it's really geared for anybody who would like to enter the legal cannabis market.
I'm happy to hear that because I think that there's more of an opportunity with the cannabis community if it's open to everybody versus protected class or, I'm not sure how many people we have in the community who have been convicted of drug crimes who want to come back into the legal market. So I appreciate the presentation. I'm excited to work on the committee with Chair Schofield and get going and bring back some great resolve to some of the issues that we have with the cannabis ordinance. So I look forward to working with you guys.
You know, this is interesting. I did have a question, too, because when just going through your report, we talk about, you know, that's been a challenge, like some of our folks that live here have grown here and come into that legal market. Are we leaving a percentage for that kind of? You know, it takes a while to get some people to talk into moving forward in that direction because it's scary. You know, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, right? So are we going to kind of sit in a portion of money there for that or we have to have this used very quickly? You know, originally, we wanted to leave it to Nevada County residents in the beginning, right? And then we couldn't do that, so we had to have a lot of people moving in that still want to grow cannabis, which kind of detoured what the real mission was. So I'd love to see us concentrate on some of that, especially as we take out some of the real illegal market and really concentrate on some of the folks, we've got some of those little backyard mom-pop shops that really could use the help doing this. And so, and of course, I'm going to lean on the Cannabis Alliance to reach out to those kinds of people so that they know this is available and that we can help them more through the process. So I just want to make sure we leave a chunk specifically so it doesn't get used up quickly by people that are already in the business. I hope we can do that because I really feel like we could make a, we could make a real step in that direction for those kinds of folks that have been doing this for a long time and really haven't had the finances to come in to make this legal. I mean, I'd like to see it work in Nevada County.
Supervisor Hook, so to answer some of that, we, we're anticipating to be able to leave the equity program or the application period open for about 30 days. But we would have the option to extend that timeline. We, in order to make, because we do have a limited amount of funding, to make that available to everyone, we would probably limit the amount of funding that we would give so to make sure that we can give adequate funding to everybody as well. But we would, if we, we have approximately 168 permitted cannabis farms within Nevada County. They're not all necessarily operational, but there's 168 that are permitted. We would, we could extend that timeline or open the application period again if we haven't expended all the funds. We do have, each grant does have a timeline where we have to expend the funds. But then there are additional grants that are potentially coming online. And there is another GoBiz grant that we are looking at right now to apply for it. That'll be coming later on to allow, to seek additional funding for that to be able to continue the program.
All right. Well, I'll be interested to see how the application process is going. I just like, feel like somebody that lives here and is already a property owner here should have a point ahead of the system. You know, instead of inviting more people in to grow, I'd really like to see it concentrated on our citizens that are here. That's all. But thank you. I appreciate that. But thank you, I appreciate that.
Ready?
Thanks, Matt. I think a lot of us have seen the content before, and so thank you for bringing it forward. I don't have any questions. I think it's a step in the right direction in supporting that legalized marketplace that we've worked so hard to establish. I don't have any comments. Thank you for the information.
Thank you. Yeah, I have some questions. I was actually scrolling into the criteria, the equity grant criteria by the state, trying to get an answer to that question too. And it sounds to me, tell me if I got this right, I may not, like the equity piece was part of the application that gave us the money we already got. We had to show equity program in our county. And so now that we have the money, it's really going to be up to us to determine the criteria beyond that, outside of the usual administrative requirements of the state grant. Is that correct?
Supervisor Hall, that, that is correct. And we do, being that now we have the equity program, we have to follow the state's criteria. And so we can sort of set our criteria, but.
But the state doesn't seem to have any, the state's criteria seem to come into the original application. We had to show that we were going to have an equity program to get this money. And now that we have the money, we need to support equity, but there's no, it doesn't look like there's any criteria, for example, for women or minority owned business. That doesn't appear to be a requirement.
So we can set the criteria as we would like to for, for the equity program. And we would, I mean, we would, we'd have to be Nevada County residents and try to keep it as open as we can, not, I mean, the idea is to, you know, to allow as many people to apply for it as we can.
Right.
And not necessarily have preferential treatment to everybody, but we certainly could, I mean, we're working with SBC to develop that criteria as well. And so we would.
Yeah, I think, what I'm trying to get at is that this actually will be a little complicated because there aren't like these set, sets of criteria that we have to meet. That's going to be up to us. And so I think the input you're getting today is probably helpful. And, and so on that, along those lines, I definitely should be a Nevada County resident. I feel like it's okay with me if we're inviting new people in, especially if there are small farmers who couldn't get in in the first place because of the cost. So I don't feel like we need to just be looking at existing farmers, but maybe others who have been wanting to get in. And so I'd be a little bit more open on that, but definitely have to be Nevada County residents. Thanks.
Just, if I could just add real quick, I think part of the process that we can use when we're working on the spending the grant money on creating the ordinance is that we can set the criteria for what we want it to look like. And I know it gets sticky when you start saying they have to be local, that, that I think creates some legal issues. But I think, like, one of my number one priorities for this money would be to use it for people who potentially are doing illegal grows but wanting to get into the legal market. So I think, I think we should create a criteria that maybe weighs some of those different things because that, that's a huge issue is the illegal, the black market grows that, and people will say, we don't want to come into the market because it's way too expensive to get, to go through the processing. So this gives us an avenue to help them go through the process and become legal. So I think as we work through the, maybe with the subcommittee, as we work through it, we can set that criteria to come back to the board for approval.
Yeah, I'd love, I'd love for that to come. That'd be great if you guys do the first, you know, shot at it and then bring it back to the board for our input would be great, if that's the way we end up going, although it does sound like SBC will be starting that process.
Yeah, just to clarify, I mean, I think this ad hoc committee wasn't necessarily set up to do this. What you're talking about was great to get the report. The grant is on an ordinance amendment that would be focusing on the retail portion of it and would be paying for staff time, consulting time, and, and I guess even looking to see how far we would go with a consultant when it comes to retail. But the, the criteria for the equity grants is a kind of a totally separate thing. I mean, was it coming, planning to come to us?
The, so my apologies for that. So the, the item before you today is the retail sales.
Right, right.
I wanted to include a little bit of a discussion on the other two grants that we have, to be able to just talk about, you know, to present those to the board as well. That, they, but they are separate. They both do include an equity program. So the retail sales component, if the grant is accepted and if the ordinance is approved, would include an equity program with it. The equity program, we can set the criteria for, for that. It would be mostly geared towards, towards potentially starting of a retail sales business. It would, would be that component, but in, in, as part of the ordinance updates, there'll be a competitive process as well that would be included with that. We're still working on trying, we haven't determined what that was going to look like yet, but that's, that'll be in development. And then the retail sales grant does include the equity component that we'll have to set the criteria up. We would potentially work with SBC or CIR Business Council to be able to, to help us implement that program, but that's also being decided.
Well, how far down the road are they with the equity program?
So currently, they are developing the, we are working with them very closely to develop and finish the application, and we're anticipating that in the next couple of months we'll be rolling that application out and starting to actually accept applications.
So are they looking at criteria? Are they looking at criteria?
They are, yes.
They are, okay. It, it really sounds to me best we leave it as it is and it comes back to us so that we can all look at it at the same time. And at the same time, our ad hoc committee to focus on that retail part of it.
So I just, yeah, can I ask you one question?
Why would you be, what would you mean you'd be focusing on the retail part?
That's what this ordinance is.
So you'd be starting to develop.
This is a retail access grant.
Or ordinance language or ordinance ideas?
Yes, they're working on the ordinance right now.
Right, I'm talking about the subcommittee. The subcommittee has been very unclear to me what you guys are exactly.
The subcommittee had their very first meeting last week.
Okay.
Yeah, or was it this week? No.
So you're still starting to figure out what you're doing too.
Yeah, and I think we got some clarification, just with them, working a little bit closer than, than has been happening at that time. So I think we would, when you ask us, well, what's going on, I think in the future we'll, we'll have some kind of an answer for it. But does that help?
I think I've got clarity on the.
I can see the look in your eyes.
Yeah, I think I've got clarity on the criteria issue. That's going to be SBC working on that. On the, I don't have clarity on what the plan is for, I mean, you established an ad hoc with a purpose, so maybe you could remind me of the purpose because it's unclear even.
Well, I think the retail part of it becomes a bit more complicated than especially I originally thought it would be. There's much more to it. So I, when I'm thinking, Lisa, and Matt, you can disagree with me here, these guys are working on an ordinance. As they work on that ordinance, they'll keep us kind of up to date on it, and eventually that ordinance will come through us to you guys. Timing wise, there are some issues that are some pretty big issues that are in front of us that have nothing to do with cannabis, so that could slow it down a bit, what I see. Would you agree?
Yes, sir.
I have one question too. So this application process is being built. Well, I guess what's the timeline for that? Because if we make changes or at our workshop, there's going to be changes that we look at on our ordinance, how will that work with this application process when those things, you know, those aren't in a process now? So I'm just curious.
Supervisor Hook, if I, if I understand your question. So you're asking about the ordinance changes and how that may affect the application process?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, there are two, the, the, the two grants that we have now are the GO-Biz and the DCC grant. That, that equity program, that was already approved and accepted by, by the Board of Supervisors. And so we, there was not, the ordinance update that occurred previously that updated our cannabis ordinance had, that, that ordinance update has already been approved. What now we're working on is the equity portion or the equity program for that, that program. And we're, will be accepting applications for that component here in the next couple of months. The next part is this grant, the grant that's before you today, which would include, it allows for being able to use grant funds to pay for staff time to be able to, to do the ordinance update and to work on that component. And then there is also an equity component within this grant. So that's three grants, the two that we have now plus then this grant as well.
No, thanks, Matt. I know we're off track because I know this is about this, but they were all there to talk about, so, yeah. And I'll ask you some more of those questions offline.
All right, are we comfortable? Okay. All right, are there any public comments? Diana?
Supervisors, my name is Diana Gamzan. I'm the Executive Director of the Nevada County Cannabis Alliance. The Nevada County Cannabis Alliance is a trade association that represents over 200 members of our local cannabis business community. We provide advocacy and education that supports a prosperous local cannabis industry, and central to our mission is environmental stewardship, economic development, and small farming. And the foundation of our work is industry responsibility. And, okay. Today, on behalf of our organization, I support the staff recommendation before you today to accept the funds of $275,000 to develop a retail ordinance. Per your board direction, cannabis is a core service flagged as, with a high potential for growth and housed under economic development. I want to commend Economic Development Director Kimberly Parker for coordinating the efforts to bring such a significant grant to our community. The funds, the funds will allow for a comprehensive process to develop an ordinance, as noted in the staff report, which will include economic studies, stakeholder engagement, outreach meeting. We are very supportive of utilizing the skillset of a consultant to help guide the process to serve the best interests of our community. The grant, is this happening? So, the grant, the grant provides opportunities for creative retail options. So we really have an opportunity to think outside of the box, to develop unique tourism. It's not just me, right? There's, okay.
Diana, if you would, if you could go to the mic below you since that one's cutting out, if that's more convenient, and then Chair, I would suggest to go ahead and provide her 20 more seconds.
Thank you.
We're good.
Okay. So we are very supportive of utilizing the skillset of a consultant to help guide the process to serve the best, best interests of the community. What's really exciting about this grant is it provides for creative retail experiences. We really can think outside of the box to develop unique tourism opportunities that focus on things that we value about our cannabis industry here, education, wellness, and health. Geographical dispersment of retail locations is important, and again, we have the opportunity and the ability to create economic development, unique opportunities by focusing on underserved areas. Our policy committee with the Cannabis Alliance is very supportive of economic studies that can help identify areas of growth within the community. We would like to see the development of an ordinance that supports our existing local cannabis ecosystem, which is made up of over 200 small businesses, family farms, and independent enterprises. These grants are a lifeline to our cannabis community here. We have over 200 cannabis businesses between the county and our, and Nevada City and Grass Valley, and I would say at least 85% of those, if not more, are just bootstrapping it, you know, every couple of months getting broke and then maybe selling some stuff. We don't have access to traditional capital. We're taking loans from family, from friends, and so these grants are truly such a significant lifeline and will help support these businesses. I also am so supportive of what was said Supervisor Hook, Supervisor Hall, of acknowledging our mom and pop operators that may have been, you know, frightened of the process or unknowing of the regulation, whatever it might be, how can we best support them and help bring them in? So really exciting opportunities here and as, as we've done all cannabis policy over eight years, is that we've done it thoughtfully, we've done it with respect to the entire community, we've taken our time, and we've, we've made calculated choices. So thank you all for your leadership, and we will continue to be a partner to this process.
Thank you, Diana. Is there any other public comment? Madam Clerk, any calls?
Chair, there are no callers or written comment.
Very good. Board, any further comments? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion Supervisor Hall, second Supervisor Hook. Madam Clerk?
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes. Thank you, Matt. Okay, our next item is our Chief Information Officer, Landon Beard. And we have two resolutions. One is the acceptance of Nevada County Enterprise Information Security Program, and secondly, a resolution approving Amendment One to Purchasing Contract 5112 between the County of Nevada and E Plus Technology. Brandon?
Good afternoon, Chair Schofield, Honorable Board Members. Landon Beard, your Chief Information Officer for the first time. Glad to be here. As adopted by your board in 2016, the county's Enterprise Information Security Program has provided guidance and structure for the continued innovation and enhancement of the application of cybersecurity principles and controls for the county. Annually, your Information Systems Department delivers a brief update on the past year's activity in regard to this program. This year, on the heels of Cybersecurity Month 2023, I am pleased to be joined here by Jason Jones, our Program Manager for Enterprise Information Security Program. Jason has prepared a brief update for you, and I'll remain available should you have additional questions. This presentation is informational and is presented for your acceptance. Jason?
Thank you, Landon. Chair Schofield, Supervisors, Jason Jones, Information Security Manager, here again this year to give you an update on our information security program. Let's make sure I get this, oh, there we go, clicking. Okay. And for any of yous, an excerpt from our program document that was adopted in 2016. It's a blend of a couple of pieces of information to try to make it concise. Really, the goal here of this program is to maintain the integrity of confidentiality and availability of the county informational assets and business lines. So the, the primary objective for this program is to support the board objective of financial stability and core services. So some of the, a few slides here to kind of give you a broad view of it. Some of the external influences we're seeing when it comes to information security program are highlighted here. The first two are something that, the second one we've completed, and the top one we do annually, and we'll have another slide on that in a moment. The second two are upcoming areas that we are keeping our eye on. One of them's a state initiative. Zero Trust is not, that's more of a broad initiative, but it's specifically called out in that pending legislation that would focus on state agencies, but we do see a potential trickle down to the county in some way, shape, or form. And then the last item is cybersecurity insurance requirements, and we're seeing a slow ramp up in that area too of where they're doing further digging, if you will, to see how we comply with national standards so they can determine, you know, how much they want to insure us for. So this is one of those areas that we do an assessment on. This is a graphic I've shown you before. It now has five years, so it's starting to get a little tight on the numbers, I apologize, but it's showing you from 2019 to 2023, a self-assessment through the Department of Homeland Security. This is actually a requirement for us to receive Homeland Security funding. And you can see on the far right of each section, there's five sections, Identify, Protect, Attack, Respond, and Recover. And the latest one is in yellow, that's 2023, that we just completed that assessment internally. The assessment's approximately 95 administrative and technical controls that we evaluate ourselves against, and it's a seven-point scale, sorry, eight-point scale, from essentially not doing it to being absolutely optimized. Our goal in red is a pretty normal goal to try to get to not optimized, but something along the lines of either we're implementing and is in process for something, or maybe a little bit higher and lower in certain areas. And so these, you can see in some movement what really happened this year, that that's tied to one of the initiatives that we put in play or started to work on at the beginning of the year, which was a rewrite of our information security policies, which policies are kind of considered from an administrative perspective, a foundation for us to do work. They set objectives, they set goals, they set expectations, and then we can build our processes and procedures on top of those policies. So we did a rewrite this year and just recently adopted those policies. So that allowed us in a number of categories where we had deficient policies or didn't address certain controls to move up our scoring, which is great. So one of the things I'll just mention because it may come up or you may be thinking of, the bar five is not arbitrary, it's considered a relative good practice. We are a smaller entity compared to some of our larger counties, even in California. even in California, as we just discussed in some of the previous presentations. So someone like LA may have a tad more money to spend on these things, but they also have a more complex environment. Our goal, trying to get to five from where we're at, which is, as you can see, is averaging around three, three and a half, is going to take time, it's going to take resources, money, and staff time and/or external resources. And so one of the things we were doing is doing, we've done a recent information security strategic plan, that was a hard one, that looked at our gaps between where we are now and where we want to go, and come up with some of the initiatives that we can work on over the next couple of years. So then we have to prioritize those based on what staff we have available, processes we can change internally, and/or money that we can apply to those. So that's some of the things that we're doing when we do this annual assessment, is to try to, you know, look at where we're at and identify those gaps so we can start moving the needle in some of these spaces. This next slide is something, another aspect of our program. This is our Cybersecurity Awareness Training Program, recent assessment we did with all staff. So I'm sure you were one of the ones that took this assessment. The screen just went away. I'll look up here. Oh, thanks. So this assessment was like 23 questions, maybe 22. And it really is just trying to gauge where our staff are when it comes to cybersecurity awareness. How's our training program doing, and what areas do we need to look at further? And so all these areas represent something that we've all seen in the training of the last year and three quarters, in the training scenarios that we put out each quarter. So what's great about this, in my mind, is the blue line is where we're at, and we're comparing ourselves against other governmental entities, over 1,000 people. So, you know, other than the human firewall space, we're higher than, you know, the average, if you will. So that's, you know, it's commendable to yourselves and our department heads and executives that the effort and the focus that they're putting with their employees in this area, and it shows here. So. And then the last item I wanted to touch on was some initiatives. And what I've done here is, on the right-hand side, I've addressed those five functional areas from the National Cybersecurity Review and what they're addressing. So the first one I spoke to already, which is the Cybersecurity Policy Update Initiative. So that one's completed, and now we can work on addressing procedures and processes to meet those security policy initiatives, or goals. The second item is Managed Detection and Response Services. Since last year, we've engaged an outside party to help us in this area, to provide 24/7 coverage. We continue to work with them on a monthly basis to improve our posture in areas that they have purview over, or they have visibility into. So this is really a great area in the detect phase, which the sooner we can detect something, the sooner we can respond and mitigate and keep it from growing larger. So a really important part of our cybersecurity posture. The third item, back to the last slide really, is one of the most important ones, so suspicious email reporting tools. We have over 1,000 users, 1,100 users of our systems. Email's one of the primary ways we get information. It's also one of the primary initial vectors, as you learn from your training. So we've implemented a reporting tool last year, and we've received over 12,000 reports in that year, in year and three months. And so in about 7,000 of those were non-test emails. So the other 4,000 and change represent actually phishing test emails that we do, that I'm sure you've got too. So I apologize for those. But it's really great because it is showing that we're, you know, people are starting to recognize that, hey, I'm not sure about this, let me get a second, you know, second opinion. So we're definitely focusing some of our attention on that email space and trying to help our business users know that what they're getting is something that, you know, they don't need to be experts in analysis of threats. And so the next item on here, Critical Business Process Analysis for the Departments. So this is something that would apply to our recover function as we go to recover. So in the past 2019, we did an initial pass with our departments to come up with critical business processes, which can help them also be, address their critical business processes in the continuity of operations plans that they have. And so what we're trying to do is call out those processes that have technology assigned to them or associated with them, and then come up with, one, allow us to get a big picture of all those processes that are in place, and then start prioritizing those to inform our disaster recovery plan. So that's going to be an extended amount of work in that space, but really important for us to be able to get to the recover phase and improve that space. And the last item on here are cyber tabletop exercises. We did a few of those this year. I just recently attended one with the Secretary of State in the Elections Department, and a few representatives from County Council and CEO. We also did two exercises in the spring, one with just the IS Department, and then also one with county executives, where we brought in all the department heads, and we had an outside vendor run a tabletop exercise, talk about some of the big picture items that, you know, could come up and how we might address those. So those are all really important pieces, just to keep the conversation going, help departments, you know, create better informed continuity operation plans, and help the IS Department support those business processes. So with that, that's all I have for you today. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take those.
Thank you, Jason. Questions? Anybody?
I will say, this is very interesting. This is probably my biggest fear coming to work. And I know I drive them crazy sometimes asking questions because you don't want to be that person, right? So I just want to commend this. I was at a meeting here just a while back, and I talked to a gentleman that does some of this training for the FBI, and he knew our county. And I thought that was pretty impressive, that he thought that we were, you know, because he goes around and checks places. I think he'd been to Truckee and Grass Valley where they had an issue. And I know we have to keep working on it every day. And so when I look at some of the dollars that go here, I support it because it is, what you guys do is so technical. So I just want to say thank you, and always just be patient with me because I am challenged in technology.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Hook.
You smile good because I know you are so good with me.
Supervisor, I appreciate the acknowledgement, but also just want to communicate, you know, our goal is to be patient and to work with the business, to be a supporter of the business and the objectives we have, recognizing that we don't expect you all to speak our language.
Thank God.
Well, I, surely, sure, go.
Yeah, just the fifth level, the level with the red line.
Sure. Actually, I know how to go back.
Yeah, that one, yeah. That's, it seems like a really great aspirational benchmark.
Yes.
Considering what I know we already do, you came up with a plan to try to get there?
Correct. So we recently completed a three-year strategic plan, cyber-related, so not necessarily for the entire Information Systems Department, strictly cyber, to address these particular controls. And so can we get there? Maybe, maybe not. Will we move the needle? Absolutely yes. You know, unfortunately, a lot of these things require us to change our behavior. So, you know, maybe we're doing something now that we need to do less of, or maybe we need to do it differently. And so that takes, you know, kind of working on the business. And I'll use an analogy from Steve Monahan, who brought the Information Security Program to you, is we're trying to work on the plane while we're flying the plane. And so we, you know, if we had a cyber incident and all the systems were down, we could restart from scratch, one of our entities did this, and you can restart and start at a completely different level. You can move yourself to a four or five right away because you're going to spend a ton of money, you're not offering any business services at the time. And so, you know, that's not the way we want to do it. We want to work on the plane while we're flying it and keep the plane flying. So, yeah, it is, it's going to take longer, and it does take us doing a good job of knowing how we're doing our work, what we're working on, and making sure it's aligned with initiatives like we put together on our strategic plan to get there. And so this will probably be never-ending, unfortunately. It's one of those things that just is going to keep happening. But the more, the better we can get in here, the sooner we can react, the sooner we can detect something that happened, and the better we can educate our staff so they're aware of this, then our response time can be faster and our recovery much quicker. And that's really the goal.
Yeah, the town, the town of Truckee, I was part of, involved with what happened with them. And it was so crippling. It just took their organization to their knees for, I mean, it seems like about two and a half months it took them to get back online.
Barely, yeah.
I mean, maybe three.
Yeah, and there was other services that took much longer. There was data loss and...
Yeah, 10 times what they should have spent on prevention. They spent in business disruption and continuity. And anyway, yeah, I appreciate it. This is an anecdotal story. On the first day that I worked here, I got my email and I logged in, and I immediately got an email from Allison saying, "I'm in a meeting. Please buy gift cards and send them to me at this address." And I was like, wow, this is, you know, this is, I guess, how the county works here. But anyway, I didn't respond, but I thought it was funny that it was like the second I got here and probably some new email address. But anyway, you guys caught all that, so thank you.
No, I appreciate that. And it is scary because it's never-ending. And Supervisor Hook, to your point, you know, Landon and I think about this at night, you know, and mornings I'm waking up and like check my email, did anything happen, or did I not catch something or otherwise? So it's always something because they're just, it's 24/7. I mean, these systems are on 24/7 whether we're using them or not. And so wanting to make sure that we provide, you know, services to the county that are accessible to the employees and accessible to the public, while at the same time trying to keep them up and running because other folks don't want us to do that. So it's certainly a challenge, and I don't envy anything that Truckee went through. We've talked to them numerous times, but, you know, it is a way to start over again from scratch and move the needle quite a bit, but that's not the way you want to do business. And so, and they would have probably not chosen that either. But, you know, hopefully, we don't put ourselves in that situation. And that's part of this program's work, is try to make sure that we, when we have an incident, it's a small incident, and it's something that we, everything else keeps working.
Are you okay? Lisa? Yeah, I don't have any either. I will say, I get a kick out of responding back saying, "Nice try." But I will admit that I got caught the other day.
Critical, and here's a response, critical of you. What? Yeah, they're getting better. We've seen an uptick in our phishing failures, if you will. But again, they're supposed to be training opportunities, and, you know, they seem to be getting everyone a little more because they are becoming a little more focused. But to Supervisor Bullock's point, we actually had recently a big uptick with real phishing emails coming in impersonating Allison, for instance, and whatnot, and having to kind of communicate that out. And so like setting up expected ways of communication, and then certain ways are not, except, well, I would never ask you to do this or that. And that's unfortunately where the situation we're in now.
Well, I think all we need is a motion and a second, and then we can do a voice vote. Am I right, team?
That's correct.
Okay. Motion? Motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Supervisor Hall?
Second.
Supervisor Swarthout, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any comment on the motion we just passed? CNN, Madam Clerk?
No callers, no written.
That was close. Thank you. All right, Landon, it's your turn. Thank you, Jason. You don't have to leave. Sorry.
Right. Chair Schofield, members of the board, again, Landon Beard, your information, sorry, Chief Information Officer. In front of you today is a proposed contract amendment for project management services for our enterprise resource planning system project. Prepared a brief update on the ERP project for you in this slide deck that touches on the planned funding for this contract. You'll note that this, you've seen many of these slides before, so this is a refresher on the proposal that was brought to you at the last board workshop. Get navigated here. Our ERP system, or Enterprise Resource Planning System, will stand as the core for the county's financial transactions and integrate with many other systems, and the goal is maximizing efficiency and accountability. Many of the workflow enhancements we anticipate are, will improve current manual work efforts, and they're expected to really improve overall workflows and efficiencies within various departments. Why is this project such a big deal? The motivation for this project remains unchanged, to address a high-risk current financial system environment, look at limited ability for automation and address that, looking at impact countywide to every department, and potentially to streamline and improve overall information visibility and reportability, which of course is excellent for transparency. The basic system selection timeline experienced minor delays this year due to our inability to find a project manager in accordance with our original plan, and we had to look for creative alternatives. This was remedied by seeking an initial contract with an outside organization to provide a project manager resource, which allowed us to address only one minor element of system selection and move that out to the April timeframe rather than our original timeframe of December to January. Further timeline changes are not anticipated at this time, but it's a project, and you just never know where that might take us. Due to the ability to find a contracted project manager, these four objectives are underway, and who is currently, sorry, currently coordinating and aligning resources to meet these four major elements of implementation that are creating governance, helping to evaluate the need for limited-term backfills for staffing positions, working with the auditors and CEO's office around general ledger system cleanup, and looking at the new design for chart of accounts that needs to be done for the new system. This slide overviews the fiscal impact of the proposed amendment. The cost of the contract before you today is included within the proposed project budget. The original budget estimated included a full-time project manager, along with a consultant to guide the implementation. The current scope of the project manager now includes both of these roles, and we're fortunate to have found a contract project manager who has the breadth of experience needed to do both. Once the final product solution and solution implementer are selected through the RFP process, some budget and timeline projections may be updated, but we'll address that with any additional contract amendments as needed. What you can see from this slide is our original proposed budget versus where we are now with the contract project manager. This slide has only seen minor updates from the original presentation, just showing how vital the project management role is for the organization. Originally, the system implementation consultant was set aside as an extra role, and we've encompassed that into this role. The project manager is vital to the implementation team, providing leadership, coordination, and managing project schedules and budgetary objectives. The project manager will also serve as our consultant, coordinating with the implementer and with our county project team to make sure that we're all aligned and meeting timelines and our tasks. The overall expectations and scope of this project are unchanged. This slide is just a brief overview and reminder of the major elements that are involved within this project in the various phases. That concludes our brief update on the ERP project status, along with a brief amount of detail on where the contract amendment before you for approval fits in with the overall project. I thank you for your time, and I rest, and we request that you approve the contract as requested, which will facilitate continued progress toward the objectives of this project.
Thank you, Landon. Lisa, you want to start? No questions?
Yeah, no questions. Thank you for the presentation. I'm with Sue on this technology stuff. It's way over my head, so I appreciate the knowledgeable staff that we have that helps us with these things.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. This looks very exciting. I have one question, which is, I've been a little deep in some change management literature recently as part of the leadership course I'm in. And they spent a lot of time talking about, you know, budgeting for and incorporating in your plans, communication, that the human element is the biggest obstacle to change something like this. And I didn't see actually the word communication in here anywhere. Are you planning, is this, are we early on? Are you planning to implement a plan or put together a plan for how to communicate this change and train people and get people on board and the whole nine yards? Is that still to come?
Absolutely. Supervisor Hall, thank you for that question. Yes, we're early on in the process. In fact, the project manager is currently developing an organizational change management framework, which will be going to the project stakeholders team for evaluation and some decision-making. Within that is how we formally make change and accept change, as it sounds like you're studying now. We're also working on a communication plan template, which will define how the organization as a whole is communicated to, along with the major users, the people who interface with the system day in and day out. The long-term plan for training and all that will be developed as far as the project implementation schedule and planning, which will really take root once a product has been selected and we understand the ins and outs of how it affects the day-to-day life of all of our staff.
And Chair Schofield and Supervisor Hall, your comment is right on point. And when we talk to our counterparts of counties who have gone through this, that's the number one thing that they tell us, is the communication, the training to build in a timeframe for that, because it's really going to determine success.
Great, yeah. So, and then building in the timing and the resources as well. So, yeah, great. Next time you come in front of us, I'd love to see the communications piece of it as well. Kind of interested in that. Thank you. That's my only question.
Thank you, Ann. And could you put the timeframe slide back up? Yeah, thank you.
Just one.
When does the, when does the RFP go out?
Supervisor Bullock, we were just meeting on that this morning, and the anticipated timeframe is sometime by the end of the year.
End of this year?
It's in development right now. The draft is with the stakeholder group and the steering committee with the project to make sure that we're addressing all the organizational needs that have been developed over the last nine to 12 months.
And then, the project man, I understand the project manager report, but at one point, and I think it may have been in Budget Subcommittee, we talked about the representative from the selected vendor representative who may be on site. That is not supplanting what we're doing here, right? We're still looking, it's in the weeds. I'll talk to you about it offline. I just wanted to make sure that, in my experience, once the system's deployed, there's a representative from the vendor company who's like walking with us hand in hand as we roll it all out. The new, the new, the contract that you have here is not supplanting that requirement?
No, Supervisor Bullock, no.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you. Good job.
Yeah, I think we've been addressing this on several committee levels, so I really don't have any questions either. It will be nice to see it actually go out with the RFP and have it coming back in. So, thank you, Landon. If there's no other comments, are there any public comments on this? Is there anyone online, Madam Clerk?
Chair, there is not.
Very good. I'll close the public comment portion, bring it back to the board, and I will entertain a motion. Motion Supervisor Bullock?
Second.
Second Supervisor Hook?
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes. Thank you, Landon. Jason, Steve? Barry might have something to do with this, too. Thank you, Barry. All right, we are through with the business portion of our agenda today, and what we have left is announcements. So, Heidi, I'm going to start with you.
Great, and I'm going to try to set the pace and go fast today. And this incorporates two board meetings, I think, at this time. So, I've done some NICO leadership work and for our upcoming conference in November, working on helping provide speakers for our Recreation Subcommittee on Public Lands. Attended, Commissioner Lara had his staff put on a webinar on fire insurance. I attended that, which was very helpful. Been on Public Lands calls. I did an interview with KNCO and KVMR on fire insurance. I hung out at KNCO with my colleague Hardy and Allison and Jeffrey and Ian, our new intern, climate intern, to talk about our priorities and the Sustainability Summit, and that was really fun. Met with the Climate Change Committee locally. We had a Yuba River Cohort Meeting, Western Interregional States Call, Mental Health Board Meeting this, just this last week with our, the notebook, going through the data notebook, which assesses a whole bunch of parts of the system. I volunteered at the food bank, which was a really great experience, and I want to make sure we get them here to present to us sooner rather than later because they need volunteers for the winter season. And then, I got to participate with CSAC staff who came up to meet with a bunch of our departments. Thanks for organizing that. And then, did a tour with them in the afternoon, showing them the county, which I think they were really grateful to get a chance to see what it's like to be in a rural area. And they actually, a couple of them said, "We never get out of Sacramento. We never get to see this stuff." And so, I feel like that was really time well spent. And that's it for me. Got to be a record.
Thank you, Heidi. It is a record. Now, let's see, though. Hardy.
I'm going to try and beat that. I met with Kimberly Parker, talked about economic development, some of the unincorporated areas, had a great conversation. She came to Truckee, and we got to talk and do a show and tell for Truckee. Had a WAFCO, Cowafco Summit Conference. It was great. Learned a lot, specific to fire service and municipal service reviews. Had a great couple of days there with WAFCO. And then, Chair Schofield and I had our AQMD meeting, and we got to award the grants, which was rewarding. And Nevada County was a recipient of a grant for sustainability trails, open space, signage around the Eric Reid Center. So, it was fun to be a part of that. I met with Erica Seward on our Recreation Update, I think as many other board members did. And then, Brian Estes and Craig and a number of other people came up to East County. We sat down and talked a little bit about getting a grant-funded project into the ignition plan, so that East County can start looking at fuel break projects similar to Woodpecker Ravine in Ponderosa. It was nice to have that meeting and talk about that. I did a CSAC cultural, cultural training exercise. And then, I was with Supervisor Hall and staff at the CSAC Lunch Legislative Lunch Meeting, which was great. I learned a lot. We kicked off our Truckee Tahoe Homeless Advisory Committee, which was a lot of other meetings in the making to get to the committee meeting with all those people around the table. A lot to talk about and a lot of hard work to do, just on the tactical side, trying to solve the warming shelter issue, but also the long-term homeless framework that we talked about earlier. I met with our interim PIO Lisa Runner, talked to her a little bit about some of my concepts with outreach for Eastern County. And then, we had, Jeffrey and I had a really fascinating meeting on tribal curriculum, trying to bring our educational partners and our tied-to-the-Washau tribal community together in creating curriculum to understand Native American heritage and how that's conveyed in the schools at different grade levels. It was a complicated meeting, and it was really fun because we all got to make the preemptive statements that I've made in other areas, like justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion, that you raise your hand and get to say, "Hey, I don't know everything about this, so we're going to work through this together." And it was really refreshing to me to see the leadership from the tribal government extend their hand and say, "Hey, you know, we're in this together." And so, I felt like it was a really great way for our county to make some of those permanent relationships that can be sustainable and action-oriented, where we're showing that we're willing to come to the table and bring resources as a convening agency together. We're talking also with the NISAN on about being a part of that group. They were invited. They couldn't make it, but they're definitely going to be, we're going to rearrange our meetings to make sure they're part of it as well. And thanks, Jeff, for putting that together. There's a lot of complicated elements there, so thank you for contributing time to that. Had a great Fire Safe Council meeting last night. Many of us were there. I was happy with the outcome. It was great to actually sit around a table and talk to people one-on-one, face-to-face. I think it's critical. Had our CCC meeting in Truckee. We had about 48 participants in that meeting. Talked about the upcoming winter and the new parking. I don't know if anybody's heard, but all the ski resorts really, as a result of our Resorts Ad Hoc Committee, have implemented parking reservation systems and carpool systems. So, I think the work that we've done over the last six months has really come to fruition and helped. And then, again, KNCO, talking about sustainability with KNCO was fun. It's always really fun to be on that show because they make it fun, and it's really pretty cool. So, thank you.
Thank you, Hardy. Sue?
So, besides the regular meeting with lots of constituents, it's been a busy couple of weeks. It started off with a Lake Wildwood event. They had an insurance town hall, and Jeffrey Thorsby and I attended. It was really great. They had a, they had a really big turnout, and lots of good conversation about insurance and where we're going, and about, part of it was down to protect yourself and doing your home hardening. I mean, it really comes down to the bottom line of it, how we're going to manage it. So, that was a really good event, and it was, I appreciated being invited to that. And Jeffrey did a great overview of where we are with the county and all the work that we've been doing. So, that was fantastic. I had my planning meeting for our upcoming board workshop that was really good. Solid and hazardous waste. I would have never thought I would have loved learning about garbage and things that we do, and we have such a great team of one, David Garcia, who does all that work. And a great committee came together, had some good public comment in there. I attended our Mountain Counties Water Association Board Meeting. That was over in Eldorado County, and just talked about how this end-of-year things was coming with legislation. We had our end-of-the-year South of Yuba Cohort Meeting, or towards the end of the year. Next month, it's going to be a real overview with some of the statistics, and we won't be there because we'll be at CSAC. But it was a good meeting, talked about how fire season is kind of ending, but yet still going, and what was going on at the river as far as numbers were going. So, I'll look forward to seeing the data from everything that we have worked on. I had rural counties, ESP, we have a solid waste JPA that we belong to. David Garcia is a representative, and I am the alternate, but I love sitting on him because, again, I learn so much when I go there, you know, from how we recycle and the new trends that are coming and the challenges that are going all over the state of California, especially with SB 338. So, it really interesting. I enjoy just sitting in on those because I can do them virtually. I had a good meeting on our recreation objectives. That was good. Went to a Fire Safe Council. I had my RCRC ledge call, which was great, just seeing how the year-end legislation had closed out, going over those things. Some of the other fun things, too, though, so I got invited to be a judge at the dog parade at Grass Valley. It was, it was a hoot, literally. There was probably 150 dog folks and peoples. They did take it seriously, and there was some great costumes. They had a blast. So, that was fun. It was really a treat being invited to do that. And then, of course, our spectacular, Spooktacular here was fabulous. I had fun. I was a greeter downstairs, and I mean, I don't know, we had over 500 kids come and go from this place. It was crazy. It was fun. And you made a hot Ken, I got to tell you. You looked good, Ed. But not, you did not beat Jeffrey Thorsby in his three-piece suit. So, it was fun. And I think what was really fun is this, you know, this is all put on by staff and the people that actually work here on their own time, on their own dime. And the creativity was incredible. So, it was a really fun day. It was long. It was, it was a lot of fun. I just have to say, I love that. I had a guy come in and say, "I've never had such fun playing my taxes." And I thought that was kind of a kick, you know? So, it was a good community thing. It just makes you see that we're just real people down here. So, I love that. I had a Regional Housing Authority meeting, really good, just kind of year-end tying up some things, nothing. I met with, oh, and I had my Emergency Services JPA, and it was happy to say that our contract was signed with Sierra Nevada for services for ambulance. So, that's another thing that's going to go on for three years. So, that was fantastic. I got to go to the firefighter appreciation dinner in North San Juan, and that was a lot of fun because we hadn't had one since 2019, and we had a fire that day. So, we really didn't have any firemen at our fire appreciation dinner. And so, luckily, the weather was all on our side, and so we had a nice crowd of the firefighters there. Let's see what else. Oh, and I had a really interesting meeting with a constituent the other day, and I thought it was fun, just talking about alternative housing, but not alternative, but housing that meets a fire hardening standard that we don't, is not always recognized. It was interesting, and you think about it, you don't see a lot of folks here that use any of the concrete, you know, the stuff you blow on. I'm just drawing a blank. But it was a really interesting conversation because there's funding that you can reach out for, for home hardening. And even though they're doing some really interesting things for fire safety, they don't meet that, they don't meet that standard. We talk about vents for home hardening. We talk about hardy board siding. And so, it was a really fun conversation. I don't know where it'll lead, but I know we've met with lots of different staff here with, from CDA to building, just with their ideas. And because it also builds to, what do we have here in the craft area? You know, we're behind in electricians. We're behind in plumbers. Some of the things that we're just short of, those services that come. And same thing, there's not one person here that sprays on that kind of siding for stucco. It used to be a big deal here. You see about the city. So, all that stuff has to be brought into the community instead of, how do we build and bolster that kind of a business here? So, it was really a very interesting day. And with that, I'll say it was, been a good couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. So, I attended the Economic Resource Council Summit. I think you were there. There was, I think, three tables of county people there. I was really appreciative for the turnout. It was a great event. I was particularly impressed with the panel this year, the encouraging economic conversation that they had. And I will say that I'd never met the people from Mountain Hardware before, but in the retail world, they are revered because they run such a great business, and they've created this amazing niche for themselves. And it was just, it was great to hear from them, as well as a local investment person and local landscape architect, or architecture, or landscape maintenance firm. So, it was just great to hear their perception of what the economy was like here, as well as the keynote speaker who, he talked really fast, so it was hard to understand him. But I think he had a fairly positive message, sort of. We're maybe going to have a recession, but it's going to be a little recession. That was what resonated with me. After that event, I attended the, one of the Pink Patch events at Golden Arrow. The law enforcement was going out and selling their patches in different places. And I know that Breast Cancer Awareness Month is over, but they do still have patches available, and all the proceeds for that goes to the Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital Foundation Breast Cancer Awareness Fund. It's for a great cause. I also met with the CSAC legislative team. It was kind of my first experience with them. It was very informative, and I look forward to their presentations next week. I attended a meeting with representatives from the City of Grass Valley. They are contemplating and wanting to partner up with the county to look at biomass opportunities. I think it's in the really early stages, but it was an interesting meeting, and it was nice to have the City of Grass Valley actually reach out to us for something collaborative. So, making some progress. I attended the Sheriff's Community Academy graduation last week. 12 members of our community went through the Sheriff's Office Community Program, and it's, it's a really great program. When I was volunteering up there, I sat in some of the classes. And if you want to learn about law enforcement in our community, it's a great opportunity. It meets once a week for 12 weeks, and you get the full, full education. I also volunteered at the food bank. What an incredible system that they have there for putting packages of food together. And I know they're reaching out right now to the service organizations to come and help them through the holiday season. So, if anybody has the opportunity to volunteer in that form, I highly recommend it. It's very rewarding. I did the cleanup at Hirschman's Pond last week, and I will say that whoever uses the trail there, I was on trash pickup. I picked up one piece of trash, the whole trail that I walked on. So, whoever is using that is, are tremendous stewards of the environment here because there was no, literally, there was no trash. I mean, I was in the weeds. I was, you know, looking for stuff that didn't exist. And then, on the reverse of that, I did the homeless camp cleanup on Bennett, out on Bennett Street, with a tremendous amount of people from Sheriff's Office, County Social Services, community members. Some of the property owners were out there, and we hauled out, I think, well, two, two of the really large 40-yard dumpsters, and then six of the small ones. There was like 98 yards of trash that came. And that didn't, I will say, that didn't even scratch the surface of what's still out there. So, the one good part about this is the property owners, we've engaged with them now. And it's, it's interesting out there because the people who are really affected by what's going on out there are in the city limits of Grass Valley. They're on the other side of the ridge. But the property owners that are, where the problems are, are in the county. So, trying to work collectively with the City of Grass Valley and with the property owners out there has been interesting. We did have a good combination of both city and county representatives, though. So, it was great. It was on Bennett, East Bennett Street, just inspiring those property owners to understand what's going on. One of the guys who, who's one of the larger property owners out there, he showed up like a month ago with two guys and a thing of garbage a month ago with two guys in a thing of garbage bags. He had no idea how much trash was on his property, and so he, he was very helpful and responsive, and is committed to getting his property 100% cleaned up. On the fun side, we did Halloween last week. What a great showing that we had here. I also attended the downtown Grass Valley trick-or-treat event, because it's in the morning, and it's great that the city does theirs in the morning, and we did ours in the afternoon. And I saw, actually, I saw some of the same people at both of them, which was great. So, yeah, I was very impressed. I really want to thank the staff, because I know that they do that on their own time, where they come in and they decorate, and they put their own money into it, and I think it really paid off. I had people comment to me what a great event it was, and we're really proud of the county for doing that, so that's it.
Not going to talk about the trees that were in Allison's office.
She, she needs to leave them for Christmas. Just put some white lights, and she's good to go.
Yeah, that's right. You read those, too. Okay. All right, well, then I'll start with that one. On, yeah, Sue and I attended a dedication of a new play area with the Bear River Park and Recreation District, Recreation and Park District. Not a lot of people that showed up, but, well, Lisa was there, too. I'm sorry, Lisa? Yeah. Gosh, all these people in my district.
It was fun being in your district.
It was, it really was. It was a nice day, and I appreciate everybody being there, and I, I know the, the members of the board felt that same way. Honored to have three of us there. And then Sue also sat in on a fire meeting we had with the Alta Sierra Property Owners Association. Sue and I were part of, I guess you'd say we were part of the panel. It's kind of a different panel. Became a kind of a water panel more than anything, but the highlight was Congressman Kylie was in presence there, and I think it helped him. Craig also sat in on it. He wasn't part of the panel, but he did sit, sit in on it. And we obviously have had a very good fire season, because there were very few people there. It was disappointing to see such a small turnout. But then, two days later, I went out again with Craig with the Fire Safe Council and toured the South County shaded fuel break. That was really great. Kind of have the impression that that area has not bought into it as strongly as Ponderosa West and that area has, and I, I just really don't know why, because when you can see what they've done with those parcels compared to a person across the road that hasn't had it done, it's ridiculous to think that everybody wouldn't do it. And one of the differences is Ponderosa's is kind of an area where you can make a stand on a fire. South County is, is absolutely, you can do the same thing, but it's more of an evacuation. So they have one large area where Buck Mountain comes into Brewer. That's a main intersection there in a Y-shaped fuel break, where they don't have the property owners, and neighbors don't get along with neighbors, and so they're, they're working on that. But that was a great trip, and Congressman Kylie's staff, Pamela, was there and went along on the tour with us to see what it was like. And the next day, she emailed me on what our concerns are with BLM. And I sent them over to Jeffrey, since I knew he had the whole concept, and he's been communicating with her, and I think she and the congressman now are aware that we have a long ways to go as far as communication with BLM. So I think that's, that's very beneficial. Hardy mentioned Northern Sierra air quality, and I'll, I'll bring that up, too, because that's a grant that comes in through DMV, so it's, it's unique to each county. Plumas County doesn't have it at all. Sierra has 3,000 or five, I don't know, something, but we have over $200,000. And normally, there'll be requests come in, and somebody just loses. We can't, we can't do everything that's being requested on this one. We were able to take care of every request. The only exception was that the county, who was asking much more than anybody else, took a little bit less, but still more than enough to do what they wanted to do with that project. So that was great. Attended a NORTech meeting, and I'll bring that up, in that we have the governing board, one supervisor from each county, 11 counties. And then we have, I can never remember the name of the board, but it's more of an advisory board of business people and business agencies. And Nevada County has Mike Dent, Gil Matthews, and now we just got a new person, and I can't tell you his name, but he's part of Nevada Union High School and their programming. So we are well represented.
Noah Levinson.
Yeah, Noah, it is. Yeah. So that was, I haven't even met him yet, but that was great. Attended a SURF meeting in my Barbie outfit, along with Tricia, and it's now California Jobs First. I'm not sure what's going to be coming out of that, but we're certainly going to attend that, keep up on that. Let's see, what else have I got? Yeah. Met with Diana with Cannabis Alliance, I imagine most of you have. And Lisa and I met, as we talked about earlier, as part of the Ad Hoc Committee, and we'll be bringing back more for you on that one. And that's it. Anything else? Hope so, huh, Lisa?
Yeah.
We sort of agree. Meeting adjourned.